There we go.
They can see us.
They can see us, we just don't make it. I didn't, I made it so we can't see us.
All right, well, welcome everyone to our special meeting in the MCF Board of Directors. It is Monday, March third, five P M. This is the person meeting in MCS, we're in the library. I have no pre-submitted public comments. So that takes us out of number three, which is approval of meeting minutes. Make a motion that we approve our meeting minutes from last month that already sent out. A second? Thank you. All those in favor? You know, the fellow's voice repetition? Do we have any changes or to the agenda for the improvement? Do you want to note the? We have four and five day on campus also hybrid, we want to add that.
You could add a, uh, it's really, it is a five day schedule with just a couple extra Friday, but we will call it the hybrid.
Okay.
That's probably a good way to distinguish it. Well, there's other differences, yes.
Okay.
So yeah, I think.
We make a motion then to modify item number six to read approve, uh, action item approving five day or four day screen week calendar plus hybrid. So we're adding the hybrid to special calendar.
My second.
Thank you. All those in favor? And the closed voice repetition? Motion passes. We have a change to improve our agenda. Which brings aside number five, our discussion. And potential action items, changes of school scheduling, including total days and start them times.
The discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Start.
Great. Well, I'm excited to chat about this, this with all of you here and on Zoom. I have a couple of extra copies of the PowerPoint if that's helpful for anyone. Take one. Yeah. I tried to channel my inner sad making a PowerPoint. Um, because I have very fine memory because it's budget. Protocol. Um, so the only thing I don't know is how to advance.
I got you, girl.
So we are here to chat about, um, school start and end times. Uh, whether to keep a five day school week or four day week or do some kind of hybrid. Um, and the consequences of making any of those sorts of changes and, um, and then we'll do a review of the surveys. So I realized that this is like, uh, can be, um, an emotional topic for folks. And I just wanted to suggest some ground rules, which I was welcome to amend. I think we're a pretty friendly group. But, um, I thought, uh, because their feelings can. Opinions can differ and, uh, what I wanted all to just remember at the top is that we all want the best for our students. To come with curiosity about the different changes that are possible. Um, when you listen in an active way, the people who voice concerns or thoughts. Um, to value us, right? The strength of diverse input. Um, we're all, there's going to be a diversity of thoughts on this. Um, then that it's okay to disagree and if you disagree, uh, do your best to propose a solution. Um, and at the end of the day, and this is, you guys can feel free to disagree with any of these ground rules, but that unity is really critical. And one of the things. Um, the culture that was passed on to me about this board is that whenever possible, we move together as a whole. Um, and, uh, that feels important as well. All right. And then I wrote an objective, which you all are free to object to my objective. To select a school day and a calendar schedule that best serves the unique and varied needs of our major community in schools to do this. Um, and in doing so, to recognize that the wellbeing of our students is intimately tied to the wellbeing of the school itself, staff and the families. So it's the, the bus and day. Yeah. So the thing that there's, I think of this in my mind as three sort of categories of possible tinkering with. One is the bus schedule. We could have a five day school week, but we shift the schedule one way or another, um, and we, that would mean shifting the bus. We could also have, um, and so that's the, when the bus, we could keep exactly the, the schedule we have now, but shift the bus around. Um, we could also work with the school day hours, not what, what are the day hours? And then we could work with the calendar schedule of, uh, how many days that. Does that make sense? So there's like sort of these three levers we can push on. Um, one, it might not actually change your school days, but it means the buses around. One might change your school hours, but not the length of the number of days you're coming per week. Um, and one might change, uh, actually take away days of the week that you're coming. So I think those are the three pieces. And then just a little background, um, just refresh people's memories that this is a, been a, a topic of interest for a while. Um, so Matt Henry and Jen Langley, uh, did a survey on school busing and back in November of twenty twenty-three. Uh, they got forty-four responses and I'll go back over that a little bit. Then. Not long thereafter, um, uh. Marie first reached out to D twenty-one about busing, um, and then Marie and I met with D twenty-one. Uh, to discuss transportation persons. And then, um, uh, our fabulous PD joined us and we did another survey. In this fall and that got more responses. We had a total, if I understand the data correctly, that survey went out a couple of times. And so you'll see there was, uh, an initial fifty-something responses and then an additional number of responses to a slightly shorter version of the survey. So seventy-one percent responses. Um, so that's kind of the history of where looking at this topic has been. And those, um, additional surveys weren't like repeated, people answering it, you know, from her was new family. We have a list of the emails of everybody who's responded and I've looked at everybody who's responded on both surveys and also who hasn't responded. And I will say, um, we can get into this when we talk about the discussion, but I was quite surprised by the diversity of folks who didn't respond. Um, I had in my mind, uh, some assumptions I realized about who didn't respond. Uh, maybe it's less access to internet or just busier lives or, um, not right here downtown Moser, for example, like those families I think of is. Um, just having easier access to the school and being. And it, um, I will say, I think that the list of people who didn't respond is pretty representative, um, of our community as well. And I can share more about what I mean by that, but, um, we had a good, uh, pretty good response rate at seventy-one. Um, and a pretty good diversity of responses in English and in Spanish.
Can you remind me? So I think we did one, we started it in October. Okay, we did it in October and we had enough. It was fairly lengthy. So I sent it out many times and then we shortened it. And then presented it to like our family night and we had scanning all around it, skate night and all that. So we got some more. The shortened version seemed to be. Better to, I mean, it was quicker to answer. Um, it does, it is like, when you look at some of the emails, there are, um, families that might be, because maybe, um. Mom and dad responded versus just, you know, because we've been, yeah.
And there were people who surprised me that didn't respond, but then when I thought about it, I was like, oh, I know that family really well, but I also know they're planning to move next year. So they didn't respond. There's a mix of people who didn't respond, but I do think, um, Michelle tried really hard. Really hard on this survey, um, to get a good response rate. And we did have, um, quite a few responses that I had to Google Translate because I was Spanish. Um, so both English and Spanish respondents, um, and a variety of responses to the survey, which we will go over. And a pretty good mix of Hood River, oh, not River, Moser and the Dalles. So this is taking us way back to, um, uh. March of last year, so almost exactly a year ago, um, when this, it's kind of starting to percolate, um, up about what do we do about busing and what kind of information can we get? Um, and just sort of as a reminder, um, I think these numbers are just helpful to know. This is a, and you know. The Larissa on behalf of the board, um, to the, uh, the twenty-one transportation votes. And what I'll just note here, because it's helpful to know some of these numbers and just have them in mind, but right now we have one morning bus that goes from the Dalles. Um, and comes to Moser and on average it has thirty-nine students on it. Um, in the afternoon. Um, we have two buses that leave, one goes over, so that morning bus goes over Seven Mile and comes to the school. So, um, and it leaves at roughly six fifteen, um, from the Dalles. And in the afternoon, we have two buses, one goes over this, back over Seven Mile Hill. Um, and the other one goes straight on eighty-four and those combined have eighty-one students. So you're seeing a lot more bus ridership. Uh, in the afternoon if you aren't in the morning. Which makes sense, I think, um, but, uh, we can chat about that. Yeah, feel free to write.
Have you seen any changes? I haven't communicated with the transfer. It's been pretty consistent. Yeah, we have pretty much the same people riding bus, you know, so, but I definitely is. You know, there's maybe twenty-five to thirty that come in the morning, but both buses are loaded all the way. So, yeah, fairly loaded.
So some parents are bringing their kid, but then relying on the bus just to get home.
Yeah, but it's also because of, yeah.
High schoolers are writing out.
Well, in the morning, there's probably three or four that get picked up in the morning.
No, there's more than that.
There's.
I'd say at least eight. There's a bunch.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. And then drop off in the afternoon. I tried to tell them they drop off up there. Um, and then they have some that come on that late bus, like one of that, not very many.
What times did the late bus, the both buses leave?
So, so we have two, so normally the bus, they, they only go at two fifteen. Except on Wednesdays, when one of them doesn't leave until about two twenty-five. Because they have early release and they can't get back during time. And then the late, the real late bus that we put kids that are in clubs or something like that on, gets here at normally around four o'clock. On Wednesdays, about three fifty.
And there's, so that there is that one additional bus at, um, that three fifty-four o'clock time and it's just. Um, so this is back down memory lane. We did this first survey. We got forty-four responses. It was pretty evenly split, fifty-fifty Moser and the Dalles. Um, the, my takeaway is that you, um, welcome other interpretations, but there was a. Slight preference for this current start time, actually, uh, twenty-five people who said yes. Versus a later start time with eight or eight thirty or nine, which got nineteen. Um, uh, in favor. And then there was also a slight preference for ending the school day later at three, three thirty or before, and that got twenty-four votes versus the current two-ten, which got twenty votes. Um, and then there was a question about why you don't take the bus for the people who, limited to people who take the bus. Um, and the people who take, or sorry, who, for whom that's an option. Um, there were thirteen that said it was too early and wanted to. And this is a much smaller survey in scope, but what, but I thought it was helpful, um, just because it's also more data. Um, and these were three, just I thought representative comments. Um, this was compiled in a slide that, um, Jen presented, um, many months ago, but, um. That I think it sort of runs the gamut of kind of, our family would appreciate more after school programs and would benefit from a later school end time. Um, but the current start time of seven thirty is just fine. That's kind of what we saw in those numbers too. Um, the second family, a start time, any time between eight and eight thirty is preferred. Uh, thankfully our kids are early risers, but it's still a mad rush in the morning and the early start doesn't support a healthy morning schedule in our family. Um, and then a third, uh, we have two students that have CS, one rides the bus on only Wednesdays. Those mornings begin miserably early. Next year, we would hope to let both girls ride the bus. However, the time is just way too early for our youngest. We get in bed at six thirty to read books, so it's not as if we aren't prioritizing sleep. So you're starting to see that themes that I think emerge from the, from the data. Some people would like, uh, later start time. Some people would like a later end time. Some people are fine with both and, um, and a lot of people are, uh. Indicating that that early bus from the Dalles is just too early. So this is this survey and I apologize, it's going to come in too bar graphs because the first is from the longer version of the survey, the same question. And it has, you can see it has fifty-two responses. I just didn't have a way of, uh. Really need to put all the data together. So I compiled it on a third slide, but there are fifty-two responses. Um, this is, uh, one is I, uh, I really prefer the five day week strongly. And then the five is I prefer a four day week strongly. And then you get the greeting in the middle, the three I would read as being pretty neutral on the question. Um, the two is still pretty supportive of a five day, you know, preferences of five day week. Um, and the same with the four is preference for a four day week, but, um, that is strong. So then. Got to really add these numbers to the next slide. Which, but this is the shorter survey, but the same question. Um, which you get a one, a two. Um, sort of two in favor of the five day week. Two somewhat in, still in favor of the five day week, three, uh, sorry, the one neutral at the three, number nine, um. Pretty supportive of a four day week and re, three really supportive.
And Julia, all last slide and this slide, these are all, um. Families, community members.
These are not staff, these are families and this is seventeen responses. And I, I compiled this data together on the next slide. Just trying to do the math for everybody. So on the left, you see how many ones we got, which is the five day week. That's fifteen percent of the responses were very strongly in favor of the five day. Um, seven percent somewhat in favor, but still in favor of the five day, three kind of in that neutral zone. Um, sorry, thirteen percent kind of in that neutral zone, um, twenty-one percent in favor of the four day week. And then forty-four was very much in favor of the four day week. And so then I would say, the way I read this data and you're walking to disagrees. You get about, you add the one and two together, um, you get twenty-two percent that are really pro the five day. About thirteen percent that are neutral at that four or three. And then, um, forty-six total or sixty-five percent of respondents out of the seventy-one that are, um, in favor of the forty.
How many families do we have in the school, Michelle? I think it's a hundred and twenty-four.
Yeah. Like it was about.
Probably a little bit more just for.
Yeah, like twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Hundred and twenty-four, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then some of the responses are both parents responding. You said some were both. So not necessarily seventy-one families, seventy-one responses.
It's not, but we have, so we had a spreadsheet of everybody and a, an email, and then we just, as they, uh, responded. We moved them over to a different side. So I think the responses are.
It's not duplicated. So, um, at least not. I don't know how you clean that up, but what I saw is, um, there's a chart that has all the kids. And then their parent and then whether that family basically has responded. Yeah. Um, and so we have a response from each family.
So it was seventy-one.
And I, and I have a list of families that responded and then there's a list of the families that have not responded. So if we wanted to do further outreach, we have that list.
Okay. And do it potentially ahead is more responding than. You, right?
Yeah, so both parents have responded separately.
Yes.
Yes.
But you only count the family.
Uh, yes, but if you look at the way that, um, the way that they're moved over, I don't know that I saw any duplicates of like both mom and dad did the surveys. I don't recall seeing.
Michelle maybe did though.
So like fifty-seven percent.
Okay, yes, what was the total number one?
About one twenty-five I did, so it was like fifty-seven percent responded. A little bit more than that, which is actually very good for survey.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's.
I mean, again, we.
And you would be shocked if you saw this, the people who didn't respond by some of our most active community members who just would think. But it's, um, it's just a wild mix of people, uh, and I think, you know, some people maybe don't feel strongly about it. I mean, maybe that is the message, I don't know. Um, because there are certainly people on that list who I'm sure were aware and chose not to respond, so. Um, and then some people I'm sure missed it because there is, oh, it's still possible. Most of these things. Um, let's keep going. We can always go back to any of this. Uh, I'm stealing some of Michelle's slides, so these are, we're going to go through quickly because they're recycled. Michelle has worked it out. This is from an earlier PowerPoint, but just to remind you guys. Um, it's about half and half on that people think this start time is too early and just right. And I don't know that broken down by the Dalles and, um, Moser, it's possible that all the Moser people think perfect and all the Dalles people think it's too early. I will say that there were people, both in English and Spanish, who thought it was just right, but there's also people, um, certainly that speak Spanish and that are right here, um, in town. So, um, it could still be the Moser people saying it's just right. I don't know that. Just. Pretty, pretty fifty-fifty. Nobody thinks it's too late. The pickup time on the other hand is a little bit clearer.
Oh, wow.
Uh, really strong response that the bus is too early. So if there's an Andy, from my opinion, it's on this topic. Uh, uh, where we're getting a really clear signal from our community. Sorry, Emily.
I, I like sat down all day long today. Thank you though.
Um, end of school time is also pretty fifty-fifty, uh, as far as how people feel about it, just like the beginning of start time. Um, some people think it's, uh, it is just right and some people think it's too early and there's somebody that thinks it's too late. Uh, like their kid home earlier. I'm guessing that's a kindergarten parent, but I'm not sure. I remember feeling that way, so maybe that's what that is. Um, or pre, yeah. Uh, and then this question was on there, if we did do a four day week, uh, would you be interested in a Friday activity? And there was, uh, a. Pretty large number of yeses, um, sometimes, and then a lot, uh, a lot of depends. Um, but I mean, there's pretty strong interest there, um, and seeing what, what would be available on Friday. Yeah.
That's kind of interesting. That the, so many folks were okay with having Friday off. And also would like something for their kids to do on Friday.
Um, but. I can tell you, like, everybody says that. And then a lot of times they just don't. Or just, yeah, like, they're like, eh, nevermind. So we're debt kind of doing, we're doing a survey for the preschool and that kind of happened to us there. It's like, um, and we're okay, but yeah, but I think. When you're moving from a five day to a four week and you're trying to figure out what you're doing with that five day and then you find out that, oh wait, I can fill that five day, so. But, um, I have been in touch, touch with Champions, which is a, they can come and do a. Something here, we can run a bus. We've talked to Lisa about that too. So I think for the first year, we cover that, that Friday. So, and then Doofur does, um. Was it, so, oh, I guess it was Sarah Grace was telling me that Doofur actually does academic, um, kind of separate recovery time on that, on that fifth day, so.
Like tutoring.
Yeah, you read the literature on what people do with the fifth day, um, sometimes it is extra school, uh, sort of tutoring and things for kids that are, um, wanting or needing that. Compared to.
Is there any data on the demographics of that data, who it's representing within that data?
Yeah.
I mean, demographic, I don't know, like racial demographic, I can tell you the, the study.
Not even racial, like even working parents. I'm just wondering like, um, because there's different areas where you will get the first room care of things, uh. There may be, might be a flexibility of parents who are working online or actually have Friday off because of the work scandal. So I think I'm looking at more not ethnicity, but more of like working families, how, because I think our area is. Can be different from other areas.
And do you have? About our, our community. Yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Do you want to keep going through the slides and before we discuss, or are we discussing as we go?
You tell me, Marie, when you feel like it fits in best.
I don't know. I mean, if you all went here now, I can, it's not, I don't have much to report, you know, I just. Usually pulled up Wausau County. Give a guy a picture of where we live. And, um. We have a population of like twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-two folks. And about ten thousand four hundred households. And ten percent, ten point four percent of those households. The head of the household is a single mother. So one out of, you know, ten families, you've got one, um, single mom. I don't know, I haven't, I didn't compare to other, this, you know, this region, other counties. However, I, I, I do think that the folks that will probably be most impacted would, would ever really decide. You know, how we decide to schedule. Um, and the board and Michelle will probably impact single mothers and single parents, we go back to a single. And households where both parents are working. So, um, but anyways, we can keep moving. We do have. Uh, you know, um. Folks experiencing poverty in Wausau County according to twenty-three census data is in thirteen, twenty. Fifteen point six roughly in the, um, Columbia Gorge food bank estimates that we currently. You know, probably, um, reaching up to twenty percent based on the cost of increases. And the backpack programs in Wausau County. So that are serving North Wausau School District, which has about two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two students. Um, there are about three hundred eighty-four backpacks being packed every week, which represents that thirteen, it's thirteen point three percent of kids. That would be experiencing poverty. So it kind of, it's in line with the census data. Anyways, this is just. Information about, you know, where we live and I'm sure there's more that we could gather. Um, so.
As, yeah, nobody can broach with food insecurity and very, and a single mom, I'm very empathetic. Um, let's keep going. Um, so we also asked the staff and got a very big turnout, uh, in the responses and this is the staff. Um, and this combines the two percent, this, the classified and certified staff, we do have that disaggregated, if folks are interested in that, but this is the, this is everybody together. Um, and. I think this reflects what you also see in the literature, which is that in general, the four day school week is very popular, uh, with teachers. There is some concern, um, for the classified staff about keeping hours, um, if you're not a salaried employee, but an hourly employee. Um, you want to have that consistency, uh, in your pay. So that's something to think about. It's, it's a longer, uh, workday and there may be opportunities on Fridays or other opportunities. But there's also the possibility for some, some staff and staff were interested in what would happen to them.
Right. And I met with them, I mean, the goal is to keep them. At whatever pay they're at, it's not to.
I'm not going to, I sent you guys a bunch of the literature and, um, uh. And I'm not going to go into it in depth, but I will say just, uh, for folks, if anybody's listening and interested, feel free to email me. I'm happy to share the literature that I found or others have other literature. Um, I think it's a really interesting topic. What I will say overall is that it's still pretty understudied. Um, it's relatively new. There's a, there's a kind of a mass movement in this direction, I would say, across the country, especially in the West and especially in rural districts. Um, but, uh, you know, all of the outcomes. Um, but, uh, you know, all of the outcomes of it are not totally, fully understood. Um, uh, and one of the things that it, uh, looking at the literature really. Helped me see is that there's a lot of different metrics you could measure success on by, um, or failure. Um, and that, um, it's, you know, the first one that came to mind for me was academic achievement, like. You know, our test scores going up or down, is reading and, and math, are those staying on, you know, on the. The growth that you would expect, but there's other reasons to consider the four-day schedule or other areas where you may see, um, benefits or drawbacks. Um, and those, some of those include, um, one second, Marie, and then I'll get to you. Cost for the school, some schools have experienced cost savings, I will say those seem to be not radical cost savings. Um, teacher retention and recruitment, like I just talked about in the last slide, you do see pretty much overall, um, and there's both quantitative and qualitative data on this. That the teachers are happier, um, and I think in a time where it's really hard to keep up with inflation and to keep. Um, to find other benefits for our teachers, that, that, this is a, there's a possibility. There, there's also some stuff in the literature about just the teachers having that extra time to prepare their lesson plans and, um, you know, sort of bring them. Their best selves, uh, not burnt-out selves to school. Um, attendance, I think the data here is like, it kind of goes either way. You, uh, there, there were actually responses to our survey, and I will say on this topic, um, in English and Spanish, about like having that extra day where you can. Schedule appointments, um, and you could, um, do the things that you need to do without taking your child out of school. Um, and this was one of the reasons that was cited as like, this being, four days being particularly successful or beneficial in a rural school district, is that often you have to drive. Further for appointments, it's a longer, you know, turnaround time, it's not as easy to get your kid. Out and back and, and then still experience a full school day, so if you are taking your kid to an appointment, you're likely missing a big chunk of the day. That said, if you have a longer school day and you miss school, you miss more school, um, if you're sick with the flu, or, um, it's a bigger deal. Um, on a shorter school week. Uh, school climate is an area where there can, um, at least qualitative findings of benefits. Um, behavior and emotional well-being, um, another area where, uh, you're getting reports. Um, of positive outcomes from a shorter school week. Um, the one study that I found was a high school student, so caveat that that less bullying and less. Was for an older age group than we serve. Um, sleep and fatigue went either way with the schedule, some schools in order to make the four-day school week work, had to start earlier. And so there were complaints that, that kids weren't more tired. Um, uh, the schedule, the four-day, we will propose in those sort of. Um, menu of options that we'll talk about, um, would actually start later, so, um, and have a later bus. So I don't think you'd see the sleep and fatigue issue, but you, you, the sleep issue, you might see fatigue at the end of the day, it's a longer day, especially for those little kids. Um, and that's something to consider about like kindergarten and first grade, um, you know, uh. Some, uh, my, you know, in my experience, a lot of the preschools around here go till four, and people bring, have their kids go in. Um, that do engage in daycare, childcare, sometimes to very late, longer hours than kids. Experience in school, but that's not always the case, obviously, and it doesn't mean it's the best thing for the kid, um, so. Um, sometimes it's just a family necessity, and then food insecurity, which is what Marie was getting at with the, um, you know, a, a lot of families. Uh, written, have done the school as a source of food, um, and the school has, we've been in a really privileged and wonderful position of being able to offer free food. Last couple of years, um, which is great. Uh, and yeah, you take away that date, um, and if you don't have a Friday program that offers food, then you potentially are. Running one less day where kid has access to that food. Although I don't understand why there's no difference, it, it's not showing me a difference right there. It makes logical sense to me that there would be a difference, but the data shows no, no increase in food insecurity, so I would say, that's one where I think, um. There's like, there's a logical connection to that, there's some other metrics there on that, um, parent stress. Um, I don't know, as a parent who goes through the morning ritual, and I can't imagine in the, um, doing that to get my kid to the bus at six fifteen AM, what that looks like. But, um, there is some really real, uh, other consequences of, just the daily. Right, you could also see parent stress, um, of like figuring out Fridays, right?
Yeah, I think the only thing I wanted to just express to the greater audience, for folks that don't spend a lot of time looking at. Data qualitative and quantitative, qualitative is things we can observe, things that we see, and quantitative is what we can measure.
And I think some places here where you're seeing no difference, it's probably because there's just not. Because we can measure, I would imagine, food insecurity, but it's saying, but I don't know. I, we don't need to read these necessarily, but I pulled some quotes from the conclusions of these studies so that people would have them. Um, and that the, um, some finding, you could, it runs the gamut, I would say overall, my takeaway from the studies. Was that there wasn't a real clear impact on academics necessarily, um, it was, uh. So, the Colorado study actually found a benefit from the four-day school week on academic performance, others have found. Um, that test scores have fallen, um, but not a significant amount, like to name statistically significant amount. Um, and the impact seems to be reduced in rural districts for some reason. Um, and some more pronounced in urban ones, that there's a whole lot more rural, so that gives me some comfort, because there's like a lot more data points. For the rural districts than there are for the urban, um, and we're not seeing a pronounced difference. Um, but there was a lot of acknowledgement that this is really messy data in some ways, because the way that schools. Implement a four-day week can be very varied, so, um, you know, does it include the same number of instructional hours? And how, how is that all working out, the shopping specific backfield? Uh, yeah, we can go to the next one. Some of the reasons that people, um, this was sort of the cons, uh, of the four-day school week, um. And I think this is reflected in the comments we got back from families, and I didn't paste a bunch of the comments, um, from the longer survey, but we got both pro and con. Um, and what is expressed here reflects pretty closely what, what I saw, I think, um, sort of the like comments at the end. The longer day can be hard on smaller kids. Um, the four-day can be challenging for families who are unable to find affordable care or enriching arrangements on that fifth day. Um, and then the food insecurity is mentioned up there too. And then that middle one, as far as academic achievement, found very little difference in a rural district, but it did find a significant difference in a suburban one. So, you know, are we rural or suburban, um, you know, and that, like, what I will say is that the data is pretty. Just, yeah.
It's kind of all, yeah.
It, um, there is, uh, there's not, there's not a clear answer in the data. Uh, let's talk about these maybe, um, by looking at the paper.
Right, and so, I, I apologize, because I was trying to quickly, we kind of had this. Julia and I have been talking about a hybrid, and then, um, once I started looking at instructional time, I'm like, okay, we gotta be going a little bit more in that direction, so. Uh, get rid of the four-day and, uh, hybrids schedule that you have, and you want this one that has the C on the bottom, so. I'll pass, sorry. June, June got, June got, uh, in trouble, so there's, so there's, so these are the two you want.
So we should only have three, buddy.
You should only have three, and the draft and the hybrid, that's the other, that's fair. It should have a seat, so the four-day and the, and the. Do you have a hybrid and a four-day seat?
Emily, can you advance it one more slide? So, one thing to keep in mind is we're thinking about different possible schedules. Is those various factors that I talked about, uh, the num, the number of days right now on the five-day calendar contact days is a hundred and sixty-seven. And then the contact hours, um, from our perspective, they're the same for each student, because it's when they get picked up and when they get dropped off is the same, but. But what Michelle needs to deduct as far as recesses and breaks and lunches is slightly different, so those numbers are. You can say which grade.
So, so K through three, um, you get to add back in sixty hours each year of, for recess. But four through eight, you do not, and so that makes a difference, and then the, so if you look at the, the first number, that ten thirty-three. That's K three, the second number is four-five, and the third number is, uh, middle school, now, why the difference? Because I give the four-five the re, another recess, a morning recess, because, yeah, because they need it. And then on a four-day, you would actually, um, build in, it, um, and this is where, and. The contact day was, has to be a hundred and fifty, in order for this to even come close to meeting our hours, and it's just because. Um, the, the transportation is very much limits, limits us, and so the contact hours are nine seventy-two. Nine forty-nine for, uh, four-five and nine sixty-three for middle school.
And let me just explain the transport piece, so we went and met with Lisa. Um, the D twenty-one transportation guru czar, who's amazing, um, and she explained. The limited number of options that we have, and the only really option that gets with, in, like, a morning bus here. Is, um, is to take her last bus, like her first bus that becomes available after they do everything in the dolls, and the earliest it could get to. Um, Wataca to pick up kids is eight AM, or shortly before then, and to be here to start the school day at eight-thirty. If that bus came directly on eighty-four.
So there's no breakfast.
I was just gonna say some.
It would be a grab and go breakfast. Um, and it would be an eight-thirty start time, um, for, I will, I will say. Be, before you get too nervous or attached, either attached or nervous about the four-day calendar, it's a challenge.
Yeah.
Because of the bus, like, what we really need ideally is an eight AM start time to pull it off, and then eight-thirty AM. Um, just doesn't get us the minutes in the day, um, if we, unless we held the kids here till, in instruction until four, which I don't think anybody has the. The, wants to do. So, um, and, yeah, so there are, there are some pretty serious challenges right now with the four-day calendar, I don't think. It's out of the question ultimately, but I will say, um, the more that we looked at it, the more it felt like. If you set eight-thirty start, because what you're really doing is essentially just an hour shift, right, like, instead of starting at seven-thirty, you're starting at eight-thirty. And then we're just adding twenty minutes to the end of the day, but, but like, instead of being just three fifteen, it's three thirty-five. So you're not gaining a whole lot of time each day, which is really hard, um, to keep your contact hours. So you could meet state minimums, but to be on par with what we have been doing. Um, on the four-day calendar with an eight-thirty AM start is really challenging.
Yeah, we're dropping a lot of instructional minutes going to that, which is not, you know. We, we still have plenty, yes, because in addition to this, um, I can always add, what we don't do is you can also add another fifty hours. And thirty of them are conference and twen, oh, I think I have that backwards, now, thirty are conference and twenty are, um, professional development, but. I, I, I very, I mean, the only time I've ever had to do that is in Corbett, when we missed two weeks of school. And that helped get our, and it's usually the high school that's going to, because high school hours are nine hundred and ninety, not nine hundred, and so. We've had to add that back just to meet that minimum time, so. So for, uh, K, well, nine hundred hours is minimum time for everybody.
For K eight.
Yeah, and then when you get to high school, it's nine ninety.
So we're still above that nine hundred, but we are below what we've been doing, and I think, you know, see that as kind of the bar, um, that we're, we'd like to be at. Not to take time away.
And, yeah, well, and then the next. You want to look at the next.
I don't know, if, if it's better for later, no worries, um, as far as the bus schedule goes from the dolls, is the limitation staffing, buses?
Staffing mostly, okay, so, and do we talk about, like, what, what the thought is. Is to purchase a smaller bus, uh, like a twenty, we, we were looking at the twenty-passenger. Um, the fourteen and the twenty-passenger, exact same bus, it's just they put some more seats in there. Um, and then, uh, Lisa threw in a, a wrinkle of a twenty-eight-passenger bus, uh, yesterday. Um, what the thought is, is we had a smaller bus than, uh, we have a staff member that is willing to be trained. And they would actually, all the bus, the bus would still have to be, um, housed in the dolls, they live in the dolls, so they would pick up the bus. And they would do the kids that are in the, like, yeah, in the hills, um. Lisa was, because we thought, well, we can move the start time, and we just train that bus driver, and they could pick up all the buses, Lisa was not comfortable with a brand-new driver driving on those hills. So, and, you know, until we had somebody that was a more, um, experienced driver, that's not an option to take a big bus that way, but a small bus, she's like. Absolutely could take that bus, and so that bus would then take off, I think she said like at six forty. Well, I guess it was, if we do eight o'clock, um, that bus would take off at. Seven forty-five, I can't remember, but to get here at eight-thirty, and then the other bus would. They would get here at eight-thirty, okay, well, eight-twenty is what our hope is, the other bus would leave Wataca at eight o'clock to get here at eight-twenty, eight-twenty-five, and then we could start. School, so if we could get that other bus to start earlier, you know, then we could mess around with the times, but. Right now, they don't have the, they don't have the people to do that, so. It's really hard to get a bus driver, so.
And then the high schoolers in Mosher.
So that.
How would they get to the dolls?
So, how would they get to the dolls, um, I think, so.
Because I think one of the reasons that transportation is tricky is because the high school starts at, um. So they, the kids get dropped off here at seven, the high schools get picked up at seven, and then they get, they get driven to the dolls high school, so they're seven forty-five.
Their bus, so North Wasco would just kind of pick up those kids, take them there, grab our kids and come back, so. So we would be charged for one.
We would be charged. And then we, well, let's talk about it in the hybrid context, but we would have to pay, and there is a suggestion that, you know, we've gotten, you know. It's important to note that we've gotten free bus service from the district for a long time, and that may be coming to an end, so this may be, maybe it costs. Whether we stick with the current schedule, or we switch, because we've had the great benefit of that, that they're under greater budget pressure than they've been in the past.
Isn't that part of our, the whole batch from our?
No.
I don't think.
I don't think it is, so, part of the whole bag is actually special education. They paid that. Um, so on a hybrid schedule, so looking. Oh, is it?
I know, I, I don't think it is, Lisa was pretty sure.
Okay, yeah, she, yeah, and Randy was very sure.
Yeah, but it would be great if we were wrong about that, but, you know, I just, it, it's just a caution that, um. We don't pay for the morning bus, because as Marie says, it's picking up high schoolers, so it's not going out of its way, um, but if we, but for our, um. Afternoon bus, for example, that doesn't do high schoolers in any way, uh, that's just going.
They have one that comes, so they do, so we wouldn't pay for one bus, we'd have to pay for the other bus, they wouldn't be able to do two buses. But they, we wouldn't have to pay for the one bus, because they do have high schoolers that are coming up back here at four o'clock late.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, so.
Um, yeah.
I mean, the. Um, I, uh, this is the first I've heard of, you know, transportation potentially, you know, becoming. Something that isn't offered to a major school, and it certainly seems that the buy anyone for twenty-five, twenty-seven, they can work late.
Have they had a two-and-a-half, thirty dollars short block, North Wasco.
And I know that transportation is a huge cost for them.
Yeah, but it's also, that's also the cost that seventy percent of reimbursement by federal government. As long as.
I don't want to like people to panic, it's not a crazy amount, but it's, but it is something that Lisa has said, you know, like, hey, we've done this for Mosher for a number of years. We're aware that we've done it for you for a number of years, we're under a lot of budget, budget pressure, certainly if we mess with the school bus schedule and we add a route. Then we are paying for that additional route, but there is, I think also the way I read. What she was saying was that there's also the possibility that, that, that that will, um, that will not go on forever.
I think that the district has to serve the, the students that live in Wasco County. So that would, that would no longer be sponsored by the district.
I, I don't, they, they, they are serving, so they have to serve the, just the, so kids that are going to their schools, yes. That, because we're a charter school, we're different, so they wouldn't, they don't necessarily have to do it, but we do. Like, we have to be able to transport the kids. So I, I think that um we're very, very lucky that they have provided it without any charge. And so.
Well, the only charge is for electricity.
If we, so let's say that we had, let's say that they had an in-service day and we did not have school that day. I mean, and we had school that day, we would get charged for that. But anytime that.
That almost happened, right?
Uh, it almost happened, but then we had a snow day, so. Um, so if you look at the hybrid day, uh, the contact is one sixty-one, so it's just six fewer days. Contact hours are a little bit more, not much, you know, than the, our current, so they're at one thirty-eight versus one thirty-three. Um, this school day would be eight thirty to three forty, so that would maybe help out with the, it's way too early for us to get here. Um, and it, and um, I, I would like to say on the flip side of everything, if you're a working parent trying to get your kid at two fifteen, seems kind of, you know, that seems also a barrier or challenge to get people. Um, having kids stay till three forty is a little bit more helpful, putting them on a bus and they don't get home till, you know, four thirty, that's even more helpful, so. Um, the bus schedule would be the eight AM and four PM. Um, if you look at the four day week, it, it, it clearly is a lot less time than the other one. So, I mean, I have a concern about that. And that's with upping, like I had to up the days, because I'm used to a hundred and forty-seven days. We went to a hundred and fifty, we could go a little bit more, but then we might as well just do the hybrid, so.
The hybrid schedule idea, one comes from trying to shift the schedule a little bit. So that we are not having a run at six fifteen and having kids here for half an hour in the morning before school even starts. Um, and um, came from uh looking at Duper's school schedule, uh, which is very similar. They also kind of run on a hybrid and they go from um eight to three twenty.
Yeah, which would be the perfect scheduling.
And we just can't hit that eight AM start, so uh we would be eight, instead of eight to three twenty, it's eight thirty to three forty. But it's pretty similar to what.
Has there been any data, um, or even information of students that are doing after school activities, even sports and what time they'll start? Like, would they be able to even?
There's, there's sports, I think, start like at three thirty is what I was told, or three fifty. Um, Lisa didn't really seem like it was an issue um for the kids to go back there. The other thing is, what we looked at is just if we did a, it's really just the middle schoolers, you know, that we want to get. And, and I'm gonna say like middle school didn't even have volleyball this year. Um, they, they um don't seem to, they seem to lack at some of the sports for middle school, because they don't have coaches. Um, but what we had also, if we scheduled out the middle school day, we would put the enrichment at the end of the day. So if they needed to, you know, so they could go back, you know, they could go, they could go to sports at that point, so.
But that would require parents to come pick them up.
Yes, unless we had, well, I don't think that two fifteen, unless we could figure out the two fifteen or two thirty bus that they.
The way I'm thinking is maybe um the school district from North Wasco is they offering it, but I know that like River has the um how do they call it? Yeah, parts are, I think, yeah. And they, they operate to anyone in the gorge, and I know, I know people.
There, there is, there is a cap.
Picks up right here and goes right into.
We just did on the practice basketball and I had three different kids in it and three different, and I will say that all of those practice times were five thirty, six thirty.
I, I think soccer is also at five, that's my. So, yeah, I don't, I think most of their times are like at five-ish. So, and that's probably because most facilities are being taken up by high schoolers. So chip space is a big commodity for any school, so.
Yes, there's a, Doris, three, three, eight, one, four, five, section two says that the school district in which this public charter school located shall be responsible for the transportation of students attending child public charter school. Uh, when in the same, in the same manner as students attending non-charter public schools. If a student is a resident of the school district, however, a school district may not be required to add or extend existing bus routes or transportation services. Return to the subsection, so they're required to provide busing.
I read that two ways, Dan, I mean, I don't want to be a lawyer about it, but they're not required to add a route. So if they come here anyway, they're not going to charge us, they're not required to come.
But they have, probably they have uh high school students that are here, so they're required to complete them.
Right, right, and that's why they wouldn't charge us for that seven AM bus. But what they're saying is they already give us an extra bus that they don't need to send out here, and you know, like we have two buses in the afternoon. And I think one of those buses helps them, like, one of them, these high school students are on it. We've never charged you for the second bus, which just kind of comes up that we could and we might.
There used to not be.
Correct. And it was added on. She bought a special bus for Mosher that was supposed to accommodate all the kids, but there were still kids on it. It, it would be interesting to see if, if you make this switch. If my concern is there's going to be more kids coming riding the bus in the morning and less riding in the afternoon. So I don't know, that, that would be, that would be an interesting.
Or it can even be something that's actually both ways, that more kids are riding.
I did take away from all the materials in the, the history of the colony. Um, started in the seventies, I think the old building. And also transporting kids. Um, and it seems that that is a common one between most districts have adopted the four day week because they're trying to um save. There was incredible increase, because like when I saw this increase of over six hundred percent since nineteen ninety-one, what happened? And um, there was in two thousand eight, you know, great recession. And the schools that are in these studies, Idaho, Mexico, Oklahoma, their funding decreased by eighteen percent, eleven point seven percent, fifteen point six percent. Oregon was increasing by three point two percent. So, um, you know, I, I mean, cost is certainly always going to be concerned, but these schools get to be a school. Um, however, uh, it seems that a lot of these studies, um either saying, you know, there's not enough quantity of data to reveal, um, say whether it's, you know, positively impacted, maybe a little impacted. It seems that elementary students and that seem to be more immediately impacted. And the real kids is what I took away, that the high schoolers have a longer attention. You can benefit from um the four day week. Um, so I don't know, I just, I actually that, um a lot of the data is talking, or studies are about schools shifting to the four day because of budgetary concerns. And um and there's not a whole lot of, of data showing what was positively beneficial to the kids academically. And in terms of the behavior, what found really interesting is that in the study that says that there's you know, a thirty-nine percent decrease in, in um behavior. It says that, you know, they can't preprove the fact that there was one day less when the kids are in the school.
Right, to bully one. Yeah, so, I mean, uh, that, that was one thing that kind of, um Yeah, and I mean, I, let me tell you, like, I've done a four day schooling since nineteen ninety-eight, it's like Corbett switched though. And um so long, like, that's all I've ever known. Um, I, I don't think you do it, I, I don't think there's enough cost savings to say you're doing it for cost saving. Um, what, what, if, and I could bring Corbett parents in to talk to you about it, but if you talk to Corbett parents, I actually think it's kind of a, a family, like, there are a lot of families that it's just one last day to, you know, argue with your kid about getting, getting, getting somewhere. But then there's a lot of families that use that day to do something like gymnastics or like they, because there's a lot of kids that we had that, you know, did like lot, high gymnastics, so they spend that whole day in the gym. They had some kids that, you know, some families that use that to go on a family trip. Um, there were some families, um, again, like we offered YMCA, nobody took it. Um, I, I, for, um, on the teaching point of it, I find that the schedule that we have currently is very limited and it's just so many small chunks. Four day week gives you more, like a little bit larger chunk of time that you can have doing instruction and math. Well, because I think, right, like, when you look at the schedule, and I, I haven't, I mean, I've done some schedules, the schedules end up, instead of having an hour, because of the longer day, they're gonna have like an hour and twenty minutes.
Okay.
So you have twenty more minutes to do math. And while that, you know, because that all has to kind of um average out in the end. But instead of having math in smaller chunks, they have more time to kind of, because it takes a kid a little bit to kind of get it all, you know, get everybody settled in, you get all that done. And so when you kind of start getting to go deep into a subject, you just need to be in there a little bit longer. And, and I think that that's kind of a, I think that that is a, a benefit of it, so. Then by this, it seems like we just get here and then it's time to go home, right?
And that was the biggest thing, uh, that it's just not long enough of a day and it. Teachers are always, I remember, just really trying to see, especially in elementary, how we fit all this in. And then in middle school, it was like not being, you know, being able to delve deeply into what subjects are doing and not having enough time. And that's one thing, I mean, I've always said every school day was a little bit longer. So we're not trying to cram everything and you have more time actually, you know, teach and you spend more time with students.
Uh, one of the interesting things we also talked about is like if we did acquire a school bus, um getting that in alignment with sort of the strategic plan about doing more outdoor ed and more meal trips and more, um visiting other places around the forge and then having a longer day, I think also would help accommodate um those sorts of outlets. Because to me, like, especially if you're just getting on the bus, like a lot of museums or places don't open until ten, then you know, you're there for an hour or two lunch and you've got to turn around, so. But one thing to think about as we think about this in um conjunction with, and I'm not full disclosure in the strategic planning, but what I have heard like out is that, um, that kind of interest in outdoor ed and place based learning is there. Um, so it, I, I will say, you know, my sense is that there's probably not uh, the enthusiasm for the straight up four day week or the confidence that, that like Michelle would need to bring to it, that we're getting enough instruction. Although, one thing I think that I would encourage and feel free to disagree, but I've been the biggest, I feel like advocate for a four day week, I love the, I've attended a three day program, so I, I, for me, a four day week seems like so great. But um, and I work full time, but uh, what I will say is, um and if you're, if you want to talk more about four day week, let's do it. But I think the interesting question that's on the table is the hybrid is really not so different from a five day week, if you look at contact days, it's just a few less days. It's a hundred and sixty-one and hundred, seven of a hundred and sixty-seven, which reflects a slightly, just slightly lo- longer school day. But really, the difference is that we are shifting an hour. We are going from seven thirty to eight thirty start in order to start busting those kids from the DOWS at eight AM instead of six fifteen AM. And so the question is, does, does shifting the school day an hour and then adding uh, what, I don't know, maybe two fifteen to three forty, forty, like what that, we're at, it's an hour.
How many minutes are we adding to the day?
We're actually only add, well, instructional minutes, we're adding about ten. So it's not a lot of, to stop, like, we're not, but that adds up over, you know.
And just, just a thought, if we were able to do that, start at eight thirty, um could we do something where we almost had like clubs in the morning?
No, because that time we would have to have, um, that, that would be for me. So we'd have staff meetings and instructional time, because the, the teachers are gonna want some sort of prep time. And there's no way they're gonna get prep time after school, right? Um, but they would have to have some prep time in the morning, and so that would be, and honestly, well, you were telling me that your dad, who, who is the teacher?
Oh, my dad is a teacher, I come from Long Island, big family of teachers. And he said that they always have the meetings in the morning, and what I was saying to Michelle is that we love that, because one, everybody's minds are fresh and set up at the end of the school day, the teachers have their meetings. And there's a hard stop on the meeting and discussion, because you're done. So, and I think our teachers are accustomed to coming early, so if they get their hour in the morning before, um.
Yeah, I think you could either have um a, like a seven fifteen, a seven fifteen or fifteen time, or seven thirty to four thirty. And sometimes you can make that, um, I think you could definitely make that option, like in, like Corbett, you could do either one. You could choose for whatever worked for you personally, um, just knowing that when we had a staff meeting, everybody had to be there at seven thirty.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
We'll speak more to the bus cost, the housing of it, the maintenance of it, those kinds of.
The housing has, it has to stay there for overnight. It can step, it can be here during the day, but she cannot have, she just said this, it's just, they need to have maintenance on it and all that. So, and they would, um, we would purchase it, but well, but they would.
We pay for the.
But is that true, they would don't like?
Well, I don't think they own it, I, I don't exactly know how that works, but um, South Wasco does the, does the same thing. Because, yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, they, they actually, they purchase their buses and, but they are housed at the DOWS. And it's, and it makes sense, because that's where the bus horn is, that's where the mechanics are, that's where we have to do all the safety. Um, it's, they're much safer and secure there, but during the day, it can stay here. So if, and, and that person would drive it from the DOWS, pick up people, park it, let, let the kids off, park it. And then if we needed to use it, like, I can tell you right now, it would be nice to have it, because we have, you know, we have a student that has to go home early, because they're on a short, shortened day. Um, right now, I can't accommodate that, so I'm paying that parent to do it, so, um, it would, you know, then we could take, safely take that kid home, so.
Um, that's, um, Dan, so, um, what would be the busting? How many seats would it be?
Well, we're looking at twenty, a twenty, but there's now maybe a possible used one, that's a twenty-eight.
Yeah, Lisa suggested she was getting, getting us a quote on a twenty-eight school bus.
And on the twenty-eight one, she would be comfortable with not an experienced driver.
I'm assuming so, since she's the one that took down.
And I mean, I don't want to get ahead of myself, I have mixed feelings about it. I mean, it's just the larger, it's.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I was kind of surprised, I mean, we went, we, we got to go as if the one bus, but it wasn't, you know, they have drop chains and all of that.
And it, it would be a brand, like, a, a relatively new, if it were forty thousand miles.
Forty-five thousand miles, I think.
I don't think I'm concerned about the bus, I think I'm concerned about the experience of the time.
Right, so anyone that drives would have to get a CDL, to go through the full training. Um, forty hours. It's no, you know, small thing, um, and uh yeah, I mean, I think the question, like, if we want to get into the weeds of who drives the bus and, you know, I, I think the the initial question is like, are we interested in essentially shifting the school calendar an hour, um, and adding a little bit of time? Um if we are, then we can, then we can talk details, because like that, there are details. We would um have to pay for an extra route, um, and we would have to pay for a bus to make this work. Um, and, uh, and then we also have to think about, um, I think at that, at my sense is that at this hybrid stage where we only have a, have like a few more Fridays, we probably are not talking about a full blown Friday program. Um, because it's pretty darn close to what we currently have. Um, it's not, it's not a forty.
Um, so are you saying that if we do the hybrid, then we wouldn't have like some kind of option for kids on Fridays, we don't have school?
Right, that, I mean, that's my sense. We currently, on this year's calendar, I think I counted it, I can't remember now, it was fifteen or twenty-one Fridays that we already have off, but it was a large number. Um, it's not an unusual thing for in services or conferences or things like that on the Mosher. So Friday is off, like, and one thing I'll remind you guys is that the neighboring schools have um short Wednesdays, and the river has late start Mondays, so we don't have those things, so we actually, you know, like this is not taking away the section, adding instructional hours, but instead of having kind of a late thing, we would, we would have. This is not taking away the section, adding instructional hours, but instead of having kind of a late thing, we would, we would have.
Yeah, there'd be a Friday off and, um, which is just no school for everybody, um, like one in September, one in October. Well, that one is an in service day off, so it, it, it would be off, any calendar that we have. And then the November one, I, instead of doing a Friday, I did a Monday. Because uh, Veterans Day is on the eleventh, so if you put it on the tenth, it could show for the weekend. Um, and then December, we didn't put any, there's a, there's an assessment day in December. Um, and then in January, um, that is a holiday, and then there's an in-service day on the thirtieth. And then February, I put another, one of those no school days on the twentieth to make another four day weekend. Um, and then uh, in March, that's an assessment day, so I can't really change that. April, that's an in-service day, uh, May first, that would be a no school day, and then. Um, I actually, when we counted these up, I actually need to put in two more Fridays off. To make that, cause it's, there's actually hundred sixty three days on there instead of hundred sixty one, so I would just kind of do this kind of quickly, but. I think that you can kind of strategically plan it, and if you notice this one, we actually end school a week or, like, we end on the third instead of the tenth. So.
A lot more hours.
So, I mean, the option is if you talk to teachers is, if you wanna end on that second week, then you would add more Fridays. Like you just take those three days and plop them somewhere in the calendar, so.
I do think that if we're looking at the survey results and. I have a big concerns with the amount of hours for the four day, however, it is what we saw that the data showed people wanted.
Yeah.
So I would be pretty interested in making sure that we're meeting the requests of the staff and parents. With more Fridays.
It's Hood River and North Wasco, we're gonna continue with the early release in next year.
I saw the calendar for North Wasco and that's a yes. Now Hood River, I'm hearing, but I think theirs is a yes too. I've heard that they're going to, like they would like to not, but. That's a bargaining issue that they have, so, you know, and I just wanna say like, all of this would have to be bargained as well. So it's, it, you know, we have, and this is a year to do it because, you know.
And I heard, um, this is. Here's like through some, my, my sister whose kids attend the Hood River School District, but that, that on the most recent minutes from their school board name, they were. They had considered a four day school week. They haven't switched to one, but I think that this is being discussed in, in many different.
They, they've done a survey on it, um, it, and it's, um. There's a lot of parents that would like it, it's just, it's really, I think it's really, it's harder when you have a high school to do it, because there are the sporting events. You know, there, there's those kinds of things, but I would actually say like at Corvus for the high school, a lot of kids got a job on Friday, let's think, so they took advantage of that. So there's kind of, um, you know, and it's scary, yeah.
I just wanted to add on the note of what you guys are saying that um, Hood River does have these days off, but they also offer extended. Up activities in the afternoon, so it's not like kids are actually out and from that, cause obviously they have extended, which for a lot of families, they work.
That's their program you looked into?
Yeah, the champions, so, and I'm in contact with champions to do some after school care. But my guess is, I think if you go to this later time, you would need the after school care. Um, I do wanna say like, um. Hood River has a late start every Monday, so they don't offer anything on that late start. So kids just, it's about coming to school at seven, they also have an incredibly early start time. Seven thirty, so, and I just know that from my, my grandson goes to school and, and eight, and, but their middle school starts. Like at eight thirty or not, like they, they moved, because there's a lot of data that talks about, um, a seven thirty start time for middle school is torture.
So I'm, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to circle back real quick to the bus and the um, costs, so. If we buy the bus, they have to house it, but like, speaking of the cost, like they're not gonna charge us to house it or charge us for that maintenance or anything.
No, no, cause it, because they would, yeah, they wouldn't charge us to use it. And again, thus, so the transportation costs, um. When we do a, any sort of transportation cost, it's, you get seventy percent reimbursed by the, so that'd be interesting if we would get seventy percent reimbursed by the cost of the bus.
And how much is, how much is a bus cost? So, um, so these are the different figures, so if you're adding a route that goes on eighty four, um, it's about the. Set twenty two, seven, you're adding a route that goes over seven mile, it's more miles, so that's about thirty two thousand dollars per, for the year. Um, and if you are adding a bus, they range, um. The ones we looked at and we, I can show you the quotes, but um, range from seventy five to one thirty four, I don't have a figure on that twenty eight person bus, which was used. These were all for brand new, like off the factory floor buses, um, which have all the latest bells and whistles, including, including air conditioning and seatbelts. Which I think is nice, um, and drop chains uh, for safety, um, and uh. Backup cameras, I mean, they just, they, they're, it's the brand new bus, but there is the suggestion of a, I think a twenty eight person bus would really be nice. So you could fit a whole class, if you wanted to do a field trip or you wanted to go somewhere, um. You know, a twen- what was the other one, was it twenty or twenty? A twenty person bus, like if you have one parent who's a chaperone, who's driving two kids and, um, you know, might go, you could probably be able to take a class. But um, as far as just utility for the school, um, while still being a small bus, twenty eight seems like a pretty nice size to be able to. It's something Motors talked about, in my understanding, for a really long time, and I was actually really, um. Encouraged to hear D twenty one be open to us purchasing a bus that they would insure and house, cause a lot of the costs are. In, um, you know, for us to independently have a, have a bus, I know is something that Carol looked into a long ago, was, was really cost prohibitive. Um, and so. I, I was excited about the idea of like us being able to have a bus and the freedoms and some of the possibilities that might come, come along with that.
Right. And so just another, like, this is something to be considering, but, you know, off, like if we didn't, if we just kept with a five day week. Is, could we possibly, um. Pick up kids later, and we might be able to do that, if we purchased a bus, then having that one person. Pick up the people that are on the hill, and then having the D twenty one bus just come directly here. We might be able to start them, they might be able to get picked up at like six thirty instead of, maybe six forty instead of six fifteen. You know, that might give them a little bit of, you know.
Is the new schedule, like the new school day schedule with a five day?
Yeah, you're just adding minutes, so you don't need as many days, right? Like, cause the day is a little bit longer, we are, we are constrained on the days. So this is essentially a five day, um, school week, it just, we are just adding, uh. Six Fridays over the course of the year, so like one a month, um.
So the, I, I also gotta tell you, like, I, I think that would be a tough sell for the teachers.
What would be?
To, to just switch it to eight, to go later, because most of them would rather, if we're gonna do a five day week, they're gonna wanna get off at three o'clock. If you have a four day, if they have a possibility of having some Fridays off, then I think that's a better selling. To, you know, to say, hey, if you can work till four fifty, then you're gonna get, you know, a few Fridays sprinkled in to have the whole day off, so.
And the hybrid, I mean, that's, if we add in two more Fridays, I mean, that's still.
Yeah, it does, you know, there's a benefit to.
Yeah, there is a benefit to the hybrid.
And what about, um, Michelle, you were saying that. One nice thing about the longer school day is that you can teach your.
Yeah, bigger chunks.
Bigger chunks for the subjects, but is that still true with if we're only adding ten minutes of instructional time?
Um, it, yes, because it, I mean.
Preps in the morning, too.
Yeah. The, I, I, yes, I, I mean, I think it's, it's more of a selling feature when it's four day week, cause it's a longer, you know, longer day, so.
So the four day week would look something like an eight AM start, right, to a similar spend time. Ideally, but we can't, we can't start at eight if the busing situation that we have. So starting at eight thirty, um, you're. In some ways, it's a, it's a much less drastic change for the community and the school, because what we are essentially doing is shifting the schedule by an hour. And kids who normally wait in the morning between seven and seven thirty to go to school are now gonna wait between three forty and four to take the bus home. To me, that's a more ideal time for your kid to be running around playing soccer, um, than seven in the morning. Um, and it's, as for teachers, like, I would think there would be benefit, um, in the, that you would see in behaviors. Uh, if kids are starting catching the bus in the DOWs at eight instead of at six fifteen.
It'll be late in the morning during the winter time too, whereas now when they come, it's dark. Dark till like seven forty.
Yeah, it'll get dark on the other end.
Right, it will be, yeah, yeah. So I count twenty five extra minutes if it's eight thirty to three forty, is that?
Well, you've got recess and.
Michelle, you had added in a second, a third recess, right?
Okay, that's what I was wondering, like, what does the actual day look like?
But maybe if we're only doing three, four day, we wouldn't add in a third recess. So if you do a four day school week, you have to have, for the degree, you have to have three recesses. Um, I, let me look at the instructions, let, let me look at the schedule for the, um, I did, um, I did add an, an, end of the day recess. For the, like a two forty five to three for the K three, I did add one more recess in, cause it is slightly longer.
On the hybrid?
And if you look at it, you know, they have more time, yeah, I mean, I could probably increase their morning, actually what we could do. For the hybrid is increase their morning time and then actually serve them, like have recess and serve them breakfast, like a round breakfast. And therefore the K threes, I, I'm gonna tell you, like, the middle school, they just wanna grab and go. They, they don't wanna do any of the other things, but that, that would probably just bring that, um, that ten thirty eight down to a little, like. Not a whole lot, but a little bit, so. Um, but I did give them a, and I gave them three recesses, so that's all, at the end of the day. Yeah, so if you, their schedule would be, like they have classroom instruction, so I'm just gonna talk K one. Eight thirty to nine, they'd have snack or recess, and I might extend that a little bit more than they have nine fifty to eleven thirty, they're also would be eating lunch. At lunchtime instead of breakfast time. They, their lunchtime would begin at lunch at eleven fifteen, um, and then there's a, it's forty minutes, cause I do, right now we do. K one and two, three is two, three are out at recess, K one in the cafeteria, then we swapped. And that's just trying to be a little bit more efficient with staffing. And then they would be done at eleven fifty five, they've had classroom instruction from eleven twenty to the one oh five. And then they would have music and PE for an hour, and then at ten forty five, they'd have about fifteen minutes to kind of, uh. Come back in the classroom and then they'd have a, a, another recess, or we could actually even slide that down a little bit later, so. I think that they need another recess in the afternoon for that, and that's, so that's giving them three recesses and they still have lots of time.
One of the concerns with the four day week was, um, whether, the, the, I will just say, somebody said whether it would, would mean, like. There would be more recess and I think it would be, um, yeah, it's just, it's just important for people to know that there would be, that this would be more.
Yeah, right, right, and then for the fourth, fourth, uh, four, five, they would not get an extra recess, so. They, they, and that's also because, um, for some reason, so their instructional time, because they do have. One more recess than the middle school, um, their instructional time is lower, so we don't want them to go any lower than that, so.
And I'll point out, this, this is like right now, um, you're getting quite a few more hours than what our current schedule. Like if you look at that nine seventy three, nine seventy three, that's a lot of. That's a lot of hours. Um, that's like almost fifty hours more of school.
You mean for the five day? Oh, it's a lot more, yeah.
It, it is a lot more hours, and I mean, it's something we would have to like also chat with the teacher about, I.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try, the two, three should be also ten thirty three, cause K one and two, three are like exactly the same, so that's a typo in my part, yeah. And, but the four, five is nine, is, is nine seventy three, so that is true, but you're, yeah.
And then same thing on the hybrid.
Yeah, yes, yeah, no, yeah, yeah. Yeah, should be ten thirty eight, ten thirty eight, sorry.
That's so interesting. I'm getting a little hung up on, just, just cause I feel like our goal was to have. You said bus and the days and then the schedule, so I don't know, I guess my wonder is, should the goals be more like? Cost savings, should the goals be more like an eight AM start? Should there be these student perks and programs that we're focusing on and making sure that we're meeting the wishes of the parents and the staff? So I guess, I'm just wondering if the hybrid solves any of these, to be perfectly honest.
So to me, the hybrid, um, addresses, like my goal, my, like for me personally, what I, what I got back from the survey was. That, um, there's a, there's a great interest in a four day school week. Uh, I think I have like a summary, should we go like this? We could go to it, as far as like what.
Is it forward or back?
This might be helpful, um, that the largest consensus was around the AM bus being too early, so that to me is like top priority, like. How do we find a way to bust those kids a little bit later?
But there's also half that said it was just right, so maybe going.
No, on the bus, on the bus, it was like eighty four percent.
Okay, got it.
But, but then the next point is the one you're making.
Right.
So, so first objective, I think, is, is there something we can do about that bus from the DOWs, because it's too, it's too darn early. And then the second piece was that some people like the start time and some people want it later, that's like about fifty fifty. So I think our community could live with seven thirty, and our community could also live with, with a bit later. I wouldn't, you know, go crazy there, but um, I, I think that there's openness to either.
But wouldn't our goal, if we were setting goals, be, meet that in the middle and be eight? And so, I don't know, I'm just wondering if maybe we start solving for that goal instead of. Going around about.
Well, so we're pretty limited, um, on that, on, on the time, I think our options are. Seven thirty or eight thirty right now, and I, and I don't think that has to be our options forever.
Yeah.
Um, I think that there's probably like a smart, uh, uh, way to get to eight AM. It probably, you know, it requires even more money, another bus, another driver. Um, and sort of puts it in a lead that felt like unattainable to me, I don't know how to get to that. Um, eight AM, if we're gonna work with the district, I think our options are the seven thirty bus or an eight thirty bus. And then maybe it's more of, maybe it's not this next year, but it's like we're, we're working towards it for the following year, knowing that it's an ultimate goal for. Part of, part of my thinking with, like, is if we try to hybrid, we are taking a step towards that four day week. We are shifting the schedule in a way that is closer to that four day week, and then we can see and adjust, like. Our community likes starting later, our community likes going later, or they don't, right, like, cause to get to the four day week. Then we would have to go from eight probably to what, three forty?
Three thirty five, yeah.
Yeah, this, so it's sort of the same end time, but we would have to start half an hour earlier, kind of, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, um. I, I appreciate the, you know, four, if I'm day hybrid, it seems like. Might be creating more opportunities. The most important question that I ask myself when, when sitting on the board is all. Creating opportunity or taking away opportunity, um, you know, uh, opportunities. Um, my concern would probably be, can we afford it, because it's a big cost and, um, you know. Um, the teachers clearly would like more time to do ends. Just based on, um. What I've been, I've been meeting.
Of course you have.
It seems that, you know, um, professional development, you know, helps teachers and helps students. Um. Also, dosage tutoring helps teachers, helps students, and, um. I guess where, where I'm sitting at this very moment is, how much is it gonna cost to, um. Implement this new bus? With this new route, is it sustainable? And is it gonna be taking away what we can be offering the teacher in terms of professional development? And certification, all the things that really are proven to help students. And also make teachers feel more, um, you know, uh, given. Find, you know, greater, uh, joy in their work, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a teacher, but. That, I'm just, you know, anytime you put money somewhere, it's hanging in something else, so. I, I appreciate, um, the. Something else, so I, I appreciate, um, the, the five to four-day hybrid. And giving, it seems more to the students and the staff. My concern is how sustainable is it? Is it something that we can, you know, maintain for five years, ten years? With other things that we're gonna have to, or the future boards are gonna have to continue to. Facilities that, so. Uh, that's, um, I mean, I, I appreciate, you know, this conversation and I think that. You know, clearly everyone's. You know, invested in how, how do we make this a great place for teachers to work, you know, I think the board has. Has really made big efforts to, you know, make sure call adjustments are benefiting this lab. And, um, trying to make it a good environment, so how do we continue to do that, continue to support the students and.
Yeah, and what I, I do wanna say, like, what it does provide when you have those Fridays. Is there is some, because right now, I'm always trying to figure out, you know. What is kind of clear with the strategic planning is we would like to have a little bit more teacher-created curriculum. Especially if we're gonna go outdoors, and right now, um, nobody really wants to stay after three o'clock to do that. But if you had a Friday that was an off day for them, can I pay curriculum time? Can I pay for their time on that Friday that's supposed to be an off day for them to spend a couple hours doing curriculum, yes. You know, cause that's kind of, again, what I'm used to, is it, it does provide, because time is, you know. Is what we don't have enough of. Never have enough of, you know, but that would create some, some time for them. To be able to, because right now in the five-day school week, I think that is a challenge, right, because. You try to say you're gonna work on curriculum at five in the afternoon after you've spent, you know, that's hard, but. Saying that you're gonna come in on a Friday for, you know, a couple hours and work with your team to, you know. Go on a trip and, you know, figure things out, that's a little bit, like, easier ask, I see that actually is improving our instruction. Because I think that's kind of the ultimate goal is, you know, instructional minutes. Um, whether quantity, quantity is, quantity is great, but quality, I think is going to be even better, right? Because you talked about the high doses of instruction, like, you know, having someone who knows what they're doing and how to do it, that's, you know. That's key, than, than just to have somebody sitting down that doesn't. Right, know what you're doing, so.
Just to question them, because it sounds like there's, there's two kind of things on the table. Whether we wanna move the start time to eight thirty and get a bus, and then are we gonna do? Four-day hybrid or stick with the five?
Well, I think there's three, I mean, the other thing is, do we wanna get a bus? And just keep with what we're doing, five-day week and the seven thirty start time? You know, because then kids would just have, like, that's an option right there.
Why would we do that? Why would we get a bus?
To have, so kids are not having to get picked up at six fifteen in the morning, we could get them picked up at six thirty or six forty. Would that help with that? Because that is, that was pretty evident to me, like, a lot of people think the start, like, getting, I don't think they start, they think the start time is early, I think the pickup from the bus.
But it's not only the dolls that gets picked up at.
Yeah, but that's most of our.
And the kids that are on. And there's about fourteen.
That's a lot of money though for like fifteen minutes.
It would open doors for field trips and being able to do more place-based and we take short trips, you know, to.
But it is usually a very small.
Huge screaming, like, it's too early. Fifteen minutes, I mean, is that really?
I mean, I think if we were just, we didn't have a current schedule and we didn't have the status quo, and what we were proposing is. We're gonna start picking up kids, some kids in the dolls at six fifteen. And then we're gonna get them here at seven and they're gonna sit for half an hour before school even starts, nobody would vote for that, honestly. I just don't think we would ever think that that was a good thing to do.
There's, there is a breakfast service from seven. They're not sitting around.
Some are, or, or they're playing.
Or they're coloring, or they're in the gym.
But that's why we have so many parents who drop off in the morning.
There is a breakfast service.
I think sometimes that affects parents more than children. I mean, I, I, on this meeting, I don't intend to bring my own personal things, it's because I don't think that's. I don't want that, but, um, I know my kids, if I actually would put them in the bus every single morning, they are stoked. If they get to be here earlier and play with their friends. But I think that is, it's his personal preference as an adult.
The part that I've heard, and this is just from having a, a couple foster daughters from the dolls who went to Moser's school, is that. They would have to wake up at five or five fifteen in order to catch the bus at six fifteen, like, they couldn't walk to Watanaka, so their parents still have to drive them from the. East side of the dolls, um, to Watanaka, so they're leaving their house at six o'clock in the morning. I mean, I don't even wake my kids up, we go to the same school at six AM. So to me, like, the e- the equity issue there is. It is that this just feels unfair to some of our families, and I would love to do whatever it takes. To get that to be a later bus, that, that matches our school day, like, that, that's really been my number one priority in this, is that. Because, because I also, the, the environmental committee is also like, we have. We only have thirty-nine kids riding the bus in the morning on average and eighty-something in the afternoon, and that's because so many of those parents. Are driving and some of the transportation, some of the folks from the dolls who said they would prefer the four-day school week said it was because they spend less on gas. And I do think we all agree, we all want it to start later, right?
They also won't take any more kids on the bus route in the morning. Cause I called and get birdie on it and they're like, oh, you can meet us at.
Well, they won't go anywhere extra, right, like, they won't change their route, but they will take more, there's room on that bus.
More kids, but you have to fit on the route.
You have to go on that.
Go ahead. Okay, alright, so we've read in all of the studies that. There should be a cost savings with going to the four-day. And it, I feel like we haven't really explored that, we've only seen the bus, but not the other factors, so I don't know, you said it was probably mooted, but. Maybe we can see what kind of offset.
I mean, like, um. Well, I, I like when Corbett, the thing is like. Like when Corbett did it, nobody actually like looked at what the costs were prior to and then what happened afterwards, so. We had one school superintendent, it was like, oh, we saved all sorts of money, and we had another one, it's like, we didn't save a dime. Well, I think you have, like, what Lisa said is she would have some problems because the bus drivers are union. And they would be missing a route, right, so, so in, in, in North Wosco might be saving some money. You know, because they will have one less day that they're, they're doing this. Uh, the hybrid might kind of ease that pain a little bit. Um, I would also say that, you know, it probably would save us money on EA's if I, because there is a significant drop in that, that I don't want that to happen. And I think that more likely, they're gonna have to have some, I think, uh, we talked about having a nine to, no. Like a nine to two fifteen bus, I think, uh, for, on, on Fridays, that we could, like, we could have some clubs going at that time. On those one Fridays, but we're not doing all of them, that might be a little bit harder to do. Um, we can also bring in the EA's. Um, for that extra app, because they, they would be getting a little bit of extra time that way, or we're gonna need help in the preschool, or they need help.
You talked about wanting to do more trainings.
More trainings, yeah, having them come.
They're so often on the front lines of behaviors, and I just think one place you might see. Um, a benefit from a later start time and more sleep is in the behavior realm, and that, that that might be a real. That, that might be actually a real sort of measurable benefit, um. Uh, the.
And also the hope, like, we do have, I mean, I don't know if you've been here in the morning, but we do have quite a string of late people, like. Uh, every day, there's gotta be at least ten or fifteen like this.
Small carpool, and this morning I got a text that said. I got a text today that said I'm letting the boys sleep in, and I'm not picking, and that is not uncommon on my carpool. It's just, um, it's so, it is, it's early even, and I don't get my kids up at six.
There's a, there's a line of kids, and, and that is they're missing the most important instructional time, because that's usually their. Yeah, so.
My, if we vote to switch to an eight-thirty start time, not eight-thirty time. Um, what happens if we end up having as many kids riding in the morning as in the afternoon, I know we're thinking of purchasing that bus, but that's a.
You would still have two, well, you would actually end up with two buses, because you're gonna have that bus that comes directly from Watanaka, and then you'll have the twenty or twenty.
And, and I don't think you're gonna, like, there's a limited number of families in the hill, so I don't think you're gonna get exponential growth. On the ridership in the hills, and that's where, where Ashley or whoever drives the bus. The bus would be going, right, like, where I think you'll see growth in bus ridership is at that. And that's a full-size. So there's capacity there to take more kids than they're taking right now. That bus would, I suspect, be a lot fuller in the mornings if it left at eight AM.
What's the cost for the driver training?
They pay it.
Yeah.
And then, what's, I mean, I kind of have concerns about, is that one person to be the driver?
Yeah, and, and so, uh, and, and I also say that, um, that the person. From here would be an employee of North Wosco and an employee of ours, so we would have that person like point six FTE. And they would have them point four, so we would still be paying benefits of that person, because that person would. Drive the bus and still have a job here and then leave and drive the bus home, so, but it still makes for about. A one, it's still a one-point FTE, it's just that we'd actually not be paying for part of that person, so. But we are paying for part of that person when we pay the, for the twenty.
But that is a good question, like, what would happen if that person was sick, or their child was sick and they couldn't.
Just like this person could also be a substitute on a Friday that we don't have school.
And, 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 yeah, Lisa was kind of excited about that, too.
Okay.
They're very excited to have more drivers, like, if you know anyone that wants to be a bus driver. But I would say if you're, um, this, if we brought a bus driver to North Wosco, they would be excited about that. Because they could also offer that person additional hours and work off for field trip, like. School, whatever other bus routes, and then that person could, if they wanted, make additional money driving the bus.
Yeah, I, I'm worried just because I have been at the bus stop and, um, the bus driver, you know. Has gotten something thrown at his head, and, you know, there's a lot going on in the bus. And I'm concerned that someone who. It's one thing if you're, you drive the bus, you know, to school, then you go back, you have a moment to break. However, I'm, I'm concerned about someone driving the bus in the morning, managing all those kids. Coming to school, putting in a full day and then taking the kids home.
But I, it's not a full day, and I, I would say like at Corbett, um, I would say we had four bus drivers that. That, that actually Lisa.
Lisa's daughter is also a bus driver.
It's very common.
And I think we'll see better behaviors on the bus.
Because it's somebody that they know. So, um, because they, the, the workday still, because if, let's say, I'm just gonna throw it out, because currently that person works six thirty to two thirty. Right, and so the ti- time would be a little bit more chunked up, you know, and it could be more like, if, let's say that they had them point four. Which is, that's, that would be four hours, right? No, that's less, a little less than four hours, so, to, and to, they have to get there half an hour early, like she said, like. I'm just using sometimes six forty-five, they then start their route like at seven fifteen, go get the kids, drop them off, I'm doing just. Not our time that we're doing, anyway, and then, like I said, it'd be, you know, go park your bus, take fifteen-minute break. And then come do your job, and then at the end of the day, they do that too, they're also, because remember the day is longer. Because we're getting some of those Fridays off, some of the days are a little bit longer for staff, because seven thirty to four thirty is a nine-hour day. So, they're FTE, because they're also getting those Fridays off too, so.
I think Marie's concerned those more that like, you're getting up, you're driving the kids, and then dealing with those kids all day, teaching in the class.
Teaching.
They're not teaching.
But you're working with the kid.
Yeah, yeah.
It's still exhausting. Bus drivers do during the day, and I would say that this is actually a really common arrangement.
It is very, it's very common, I think even Lisa said, like, even in the doubt, it's common, and it's very common, because you're not gonna find too many people that can. Work in the morning, do nothing and work in the afternoon.
Okay. Um, as far as cost, I will say, a bus is a one-time cost. When, when I think budget for my own employment, I make a big difference between a one-time loss and a recurring. And a bus retains value, if we get in financial duress and we need to sell the bus back to North Wosco or sell a bus, there's also. Pretty good market on used buses, and they're hard to come by and they're valuable. Um, so that's not an impossibility either, as far as like a liquidable asset. Um, the, the route, we would have to pay something for, um. As we're adding, we are adding a route in the afternoon, the four, at four o'clock right now, we just have one bus and we would have two buses. Um, at that, I think if it's going on eighty-four, it's roughly twenty-two thousand dollars, which is roughly two students. I. Feel fairly bullish that if we shifted our schedule and had this kind of schedule coming, going to the dolls. That would be pretty attractive to some families in the dolls. Um, just because I, I know families who are attracted to Moser's school, but that really early time is, is a strong deterrent, so. Um, you know, it's not to say it's not a cost, but I think it's a pretty manageable cost, um, and. Uh, yeah, so, the, it, this costs more than the current. But I will flag, like I said, that there's a possibility of having to pay already on the current because of the budget pressure that North Wosco is paying. Confronting, so the, the big difference, I think, is that, um, bus cost. Um, it is approaching seven o'clock. Uh, we can talk potential next steps, um, whether or not folks feel like they have the information they need. Um, to make some kind of decision, whether we wanna have a follow-up meeting in a week. Whether we want to do some kind of additional community outreach, when we want a provisional, I'm open to whatever, but I, I wanna recognize the time. And sort of my own fatigue, and, and the limitations of like, we're, um. We're never gonna have every single T crossed and I dotted, but which ones do we need? And, and what information do we need to make a decision in, um, and, uh.
They, they.
And they would also, my understanding is be able to use the bus and to use our bus driver, so it's not like for D twenty-one, it's without, um, benefits. Like, they have been wanting another short bus, they have one, and the, um, so my sense is, this would, this would be kind of a mutually beneficial thing. Um, a kind of a win against Corbett's sides, uh, that those small buses are, are really popular. For things like sporting events, um, you know, like the, uh. Field, small field trips, um, and so that's been something that D twenty-one's been wanting.
I have a question related to staff meeting times, currently do you meet at the end of the day? So, would that be meeting in the morning, depending on limited, done at the end of the day, you go instead of. So the actual time where staff leaves the school will be about the same?
No, no. So they, so they have two choices, either they work a seven, seven fifteen to four fifteen time, or, or a four, seven thirty to four thirty time. And then, and then in-service times would be eight hours, so those would be, and I think we'd probably do seven thirty to three thirty, so they wouldn't have to be that. What I, what I had done on the four-day week is I made sure that their current number of hours is gonna be the same current number of hours. And so I might have to tweak with that a little bit, just to make sure that we have the same, like, because. Uh, we don't wanna mess with the contract that much, so, um.
So currently they're here.
Seven to three.
Okay, and then proposed, the hybrid is?
Seven thirty-three, uh, seven thirty-four thirty, but that might actually be a little bit less, because I have, because the hybrid. Yeah, yeah, and it was thrown together today, so it might be less.
And the hybrid, you're adding three more Fridays off.
You're at, so, no, cause, so it should be one sixty-one and versus five-day is one sixty-seven, so six.
From what we current.
From what we, uh, yes, from what we current, yeah.
The hybrid is only adding six more Fridays off from what we're running, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it gives you both, right, like, it gives you. Six more weeks than a four-day week, which is quite a few, and then it also shifts the schedule. Mm-hmm.
Where are the conferences on the hybrid?
Um, I haven't put those on there yet, so that, and I think that's something I want to talk to, we're, we're gonna talk about conferences anyway, whether it's a five, four, or three hybrid, so I just, we're gonna talk about those, so they will be on there, too.
One of the things I wanted to flag is that we are in the process right now of negotiating the um MTA contract, so in some ways, this is a really good time to be talking about this. I would encourage us, if we go with no change, and we decide we are just gonna stick with the schedule we have, that we still, when we are negotiating the contract, have a um in the alternative language. Uh, in the alternative, if we go to a four-day week, or in the alternative, we go to a hybrid uh and negotiate those terms, because that contract, the hope is that we'll only get opened up every three years, and so um if we if we only negotiate it with a five-day week in the language, we will be committed to a five-day language, five days, does that make sense? So when I put in the potential next steps, I um I think under, I would encourage us under any scenario to uh include language about either a hybrid or a four-day in that agreement um as in the alternative.
Another thing is that we're also in the process of strategic planning and I was like, I wish that we were a little bit further along so that we could compare these terms and that effort and what comes out of that, because I think that it could be some so, well, it could definitely, it'll definitely result in some changes to our school and way we do things, and it would just it'd be nice to look at those.
I agree, and then maybe maybe um an actual hybrid calendar finish, to see what that would actually look like.
Yeah, I'm sorry, say that.
Like, uh, putting in the the uh conference dates and like the other, the other two Fridays or the other Fridays are still missing to really compare that, because now that I'm thinking about conference and that I'm thinking about, this looks more like a four-day um this with bus once we put all of those extra. Um, because then if you compare this one with the four-day, they actually don't really differ a lot when you put in the other Fridays that are missing from the hybrid.
Yeah, just two Fridays, which I I think more than like.
So it's basically a four-day. It's actually not, because.
No, for calling.
No.
No, it's much closer to the five.
It's closer to the five.
Yeah, because in September, you only have one day off, one Friday off, which which on the other four-day one, you'd have two Fridays off, well, you'd have, I'm not counting the in-service days. So um and then in October, there's there's a statewide in-service, so there's nothing I can do about that one.
It's the thirty-first.
But there are three Fridays.
No, the thirty-first would be a nose.
But what we, the other Fridays are are still here, because they say that on the hybrid, you're still missing another Friday.
Only two.
Only two, only two, so they're mostly, and and my guess is
April and May.
And and one of the thought is before, just because this was kind of thrown together, is, you know, thinking about June, um you, do you want to end that early or do you want to go later? If you want to go later, then we do have to add some more Fridays in, but if you, if we, if June fourth is our last day of school, then.
Which I guess that's above and yeah. I think even parents would probably like to end earlier, uh, longer summer.
Because on the five-day, they already have Friday off anyway, and then, yeah, staff could be done that following week.
I think that the most telling comparison is the number of student contact days
Yes, yeah.
to to decide whether you're more like a four-day or a five-day um where the hybrids got a hundred and sixty-one student contact days and the the four-day has a hundred and forty-seven. So like, you're in the hundreds and sixties uh versus the hundreds and forties. Um, so that's fourteen.
Days less, anyway, but.
Right.
It's only sixty, yeah, yeah, it it might be a more palatable segue.
Yes, that way, yes.
Yeah.
To me, um, we haven't really discussed if there would be a site Friday program on the hybrid.
I think we did, we did kind of say that, I I mean, we, that would be hard to do, but we certainly could look into what that looks like, you know.
I think that was an advantage to the four-day.
Yeah.
We don't really have.
The other thing I noticed about the hybrid, when it looks right now at least, is that it it like, there's no rhyme or reason to when we have a Friday, we would have a Friday out, which is kind of hard for some, like it would be, it might be easier for some people to think about it, because something that's consistent.
Like every other Friday, like I was gonna say Sherman County does, um, I think every other Friday off.
Just so that you can plan ahead, because some folks do have to work on Fridays and have schedules that are made two weeks in advance.
Or, yeah.
I think it could be, or if it doesn't work out, well, it probably wouldn't work out to be every other, right?
No, it's pretty hard to do that rather, um, but.
But uh, maybe with conferences, but then if we have conferences on Fridays, I don't know.
Yeah. And that, yeah, and that's it, like, I also want to kind of talk about conferences as far as, maybe a quick survey on that when we have spring conference, you know, is and looking at what is a percentage of parents that can come to just a Friday conference, or do we need to have like an option of having, oh, you know, an E theme conference, um, like with that, so.
Do uh EA hours count as contact hours? There's not, so if there's.
Oh, no. Instructional hours have to have a teacher.
What about other schools?
Huh?
That that company that comes in, is that instructional hours or is that just extracurricular?
Oh, yeah, but there's a teacher in there, I would think.
One of our staffers or their own.
One of our staff members.
So one suggestion I heard was um to nail down a hybrid calendar as far as reaching.
Yeah, I think, could could be, certainly, maybe one of them is we're gonna eliminate the four-day at this point.
Yeah, everybody.
Eliminate the five-day.
So, yeah, I don't know, I just feel like we haven't really discussed.
We need numbers, I think we need the goals. Yeah, well. Veronica, you know, how the um newer increased um hours in the staff, you know, affect the budget.
But there, there's no increase hours of the staff. They're gonna be the same.
Okay.
For any, for any of them, that's the one thing is you want to make sure that the hours are the same.
For the teacher.
For the teachers.
Okay, so it was just the, that was just.
Yeah, and a number of, yeah, yeah. Um, there could be some increases for the EAs, but I'm gonna tell you that that's very small compared to well, the, so we're not paying the driver.
Drivers.
The driver's gonna be in that twenty thousand dollars, that that gets paid out of it. So in essence, for that twenty-two thousand dollars, like we're already paying that person currently, and now you're in Wasco's, that they're employees, but we're still kind of still paying for that person, right?
We're splitting the pay.
So, yeah.
And I would love to push for a four-day week, I saw a lot of support for it, I I think the data is good on it, I love the four-day week and I would be here advocating for it, except for that we struggle to make the busing work at eight AM, and without an eight AM start time, the school day is short, shortened um to the point where you are still meeting state standards for instructional time, but I am well aware of this board's te, like.
Totally.
Number one goal is to not reduce.
With use instructor.
So I felt like, I felt like if we couldn't keep our number of instructional hours and with a four-day week, we couldn't make it work this year. And I didn't see an option for that eight AM start, which would be ideal, and try, trust me, like.
Unless we buy the bus, and even with buying the bus, you're saying.
Even by the bus, we would need two buses and two drivers that are ours, and it just, it didn't seem like it was possible.
Or if there is, you know, maybe a smaller additional cost that we haven't enough, I don't, I'm, I always am going towards like the ultimate goal here is eight.
Yeah.
And so how do we, I'm, um, you know, my background is all about how do we get to the the bigger goal?
Yeah.
And that is like the only thing I want to explore if that can help.
Appreciate you, um, I also think that there is um mixed interest in the four-day, um, and that that like tempers how hard I'm gonna go for that, for that goal. So my sense is that you don't have an unanimous board that's interested in the shift to the point where you're gonna push as hard as you possibly can find outside funding, buy another, buy two buses and make that eight AM. It's a, um, so I think that from my perspective, what I see is on the, the options on the table, and you guys can correct me if you feel like I'm wrong, you know, no, we all, we've been dreaming of a four-day week and can't believe you're saying this, but um I have been dreaming of a four-day week and I'm willing, what I see is a possible compromise that meets many of our goals um is the hybrid option. It shifts the school day in a way that addresses that early start time um for the families who are impacted by that, it shifts the end time for the families that are impacted by that, and we got strong responses, I'll remind you, on both ends. Um, and uh it comes at what I think is a pretty modi- modest cost, that we have to buy a bus, but there is many additional benefits of owning a bus for our school, like, and that I think can be can be used in the strategic planning, like if you think about, now we have a bus, the possibilities for what we can do there are enhanced.
Yeah, we agree.
Yeah. Um, and so I want, my, the questions for me are like, I I like the question of like, do we have some kind of rhyme or reason to the Fridays? So that the families can plan and kind of have a, there's a cadence to it, right?
I I think that the thing, the piece that I feel a little bit uncomfortable with, with like trying to make the hybrid calendars, I would really like to include the staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and that if we, if we could um get something and then have it ready for you on March seventeen. So.
And I, yeah, I would love staff feedback on what, how they feel about it, because it is, it is a compromise.
And they might come up with a whole other, like.
But I think maybe the first step is having a calendar to present to staff.
Okay.
And get that, that is like, you know, basically done, what would the hybrid look like, and then see what staff's feedback is, and I would love staff feedback.
Right, and the hours.
Yeah, and then there would be at least a more time to spend on the hours.
I know.
And then against the hybrid at all, I just want to make sure we're talking about the right goals, I want to make sure that we're meeting your parent wishes and we're looking at cost savings and we are making sure that we're looking into those Friday perks that people were excited about to have these special programs, where we could have done, you know, Science Fridays, we could have done, you know, these other programs like coding or, you know, gym sports, anything, so. I think the one thing that is funny to allow is for the middle school at the end of the day, have enrichment um activity, you know, oh, well, I guess um opportunities, you know, and so I'm kind of excited about that for them.
What do you mean?
Um, so currently, like, having them have, like, at the end of the day, they have not the full, uh right now, we'd have like hour, hour ten minutes for their rotations, but having like a fifty-minute rotation where they could select, they could choose like they could choose between art, um, Spanish is something we'd like to offer them, um, it could be, um, the wheels, that's like.
We did that before, and the teachers would kind of choose like an elective and the teacher, and we used to change it every, like, six weeks.
But we would do that every trimester, because we don't do it that often, but uh, the thing, first thing is to ask the kids, like, ask the kids, what, what would they like, yeah, like, it's like, I don't like that.
That would be great.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it just, like, you saw, like, with the community stuff and kind of making that up there, and there was a lot more, um, behaviors that.
And because there activities, I I would assume that um with the background checks, you could invite community members to come and teach during that time, like it.
You could, I, I, yeah, yeah, you could, that we'd have to kind of figure out how that worked, because that would be like something you'd have to commit to either, and maybe we do some Monday, you know, so, Monday, Wednesday, and another thing on Tuesday, Thursday, I don't know what that looks like. Um, I'm excited to hear what the kids would like to have, you know, but I also kind of excited for our kids that are not Spanish-speaking to have an opportunity to learn Spanish, because they're gonna need that when they go to high school. Because they have to take a foreign language when they're in high school, and that's probably the most common, that's, but like, that's the smartest one to take, so. Because my husband took French and that's not really normal, and they see. Or you're going, are you gonna go tour Mount LeBlanc? Anyway, so you'd be a lot French there.
Another thing that I did see up here at some point, but I just want to like remind us all is that we have had a lot of changes and we are like proposing another pretty, maybe not as significant as it felt at the beginning, but but proposing another change and some more like uncertainties, and we do have a lot of examples, we appreciate that. Um, just for us to keep that in mind, I think.
I think one of my biggest that my mind goes to is who potentially are we excluding? I, I don't mean to sound like I don't care about anyone else, but I always think about not my personal need, but those that don't have a voice or that we didn't reach that we couldn't reach for whatever reason, or that they even didn't see it, but they didn't feel the courage enough to out-speak, because it could be that, too. Um, and my, my kind of view is, if we are excluding someone, at least in my point of view, then we're not doing what what we're supposed to be doing.
Like, that is kind of maybe a radical suggestion. What if we had something that went home in the Tuesday folders in Spanish and English that said, we are conflicted by these switchings, we're scheduled by an hour from seven thirty to maybe, yeah, from seven thirty to eight thirty, start, um, submit your public comment to the board before our next meeting.
Well, I would like to take it actually off its stuff, because it's also been proven data that trying to get surveys out of anyone, emails, it's the last thing you're wanting to get.
Yeah.
Like, with due, all due respect, it takes a lot of effort and everything.
And I'm not suggesting that, yeah, this is different, this was Tuesday.
Yeah, even that, it's, I'm sure there's a lot of teachers that need to constantly try to get hold of a parent to get something back. I think, um, and I would compromise myself into actually studying maybe a couple days or even three days where we can maybe have the group of three or four that actually make these phone calls and try to get as many responses as possible. And I kind of hate to say it, but during the day, because usually parents were, were always attentive, if school's calling, if they have numbers, something must be up, and I'm gonna answer that.
And and I, and I'm sure Margaret could help us with that, yeah, because she, like, she does a lot, like, she's having to call people for conferences right now. She has to get those conferences scheduled so that we make sure we have interpreters.
Yep.
And so, yeah, and, you know, she's got some time and she can talk with those, she's doing Elvis, that we could, yeah, we could figure that out.
For all of the families.
To all of them.
Yeah.
Percent we missed.
Yeah, I think everyone, because this is
You have to redo it, yeah.
It's a new, different subject, I think, everyone, and I think just keeping it really short and maybe having some suggestions of how to try to cut the conversation, and I don't mean we don't want to hear parents, but there's also needs to be a nice flow of not getting too involved in a conversation when you're trying to collect things.
So, well, one suggestion would be to be, to do a, just a quick survey out and then try and get some of the people and then get the remainder of the table, so that that kind of helps.
I think if it went home in Tuesday folders, because most of those come back, you'd be surprised, in K five, those come back pretty consistently, middle school is a different story, but if we did that in the K five, I think we'd get a great response, and then you kind of look at what families need to contact, and then that's gonna be a lot.
Yeah, and it's a lower input on the front end for us, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that anything, you know, you want to make sure that you hash everything out really well on the front end, so that the rollout can be as seamless as possible, and I think that like I'm just saying, the school has been through a lot, um, um, there's no, we don't need to there's not, no, what is, I don't see any pressure to rush anything. I think the alternative, the original contract, maybe. The possibility for things to be able to be.
There is some sensitivity around, um, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, I'm French.
That is my thing, that's not mine.
And I'm German, so.
Our European selves will just, you know, be assertive, um, I, yeah, the time's negative. Is just, is the bus part, purchase, potentially.
Yeah.
Um, so sometimes it can take as long as two years to get a bus, and there are buses that are like on the assembly line now, so if we're interested in a bus, this used bus might be, is a wrinkle, um, but there may be some sensitivity around there, and we can check with Lisa on that.
She was like, when are you gonna know this? When are you gonna know this?
And so tariffs are probably the.
But, yeah, right?
Well, not, I don't think, yeah.
And I don't see a real influx of EV electric buses happening any month.
Yeah, and so what happens is, it's a Chevy bus, right, it was a Chevy one, was it the Ford?
I forget if it was the Ford or the Chevy.
I think it's a Ford, it's Ford, it's a Ford bus, and they're already kind of in production, and what happens is, what you want to do is you want to get your order in before it's already been built, because then they are like, whether or not they choose fourteen-seat pickle in it or twenty-seats in it, you want to get that, so you're not doing that, but she was saying that she would need to do that like within the next week or two, so we're, yeah, we're, you know, a little late on that, myself, the only action I know.
I mean, would that be another conversation, too, or something to think, if? I mean, would that be another conversation too or something to think if, if nothing ends up happening and just sticking, is it still beneficial in that? What I'm hearing is, even if we don't change the schedule or even later start, um later start time, would it be beneficial to actually purchase one and maybe? Help and even even if there's the potential of one of the routes starting to be.
Yeah.
Um, paid for from Mordure, would that, could we? Make that work, even with, not necessarily with the schedule change, just making sure that maybe Mordure does need a school bus.
And I think that really goes with our strategic plan, because it would.
I think my biggest would be on the bus is can we make sure it can fit. Two teachers and a classroom, whatever classroom bigger size we have, if not, I don't really see a point to having a bus, we cast transport.
I was like, I didn't know that that was an option until she said.
And then again, I would like to see it um forecasted, budgeted in with Veronica to see how that looks and the sustainability of actually owning it.
Possibility, we could finance it, so we could spread out that cost, right, so it's not just a one.
People finance buses all the time, so.
Yeah, um, I think I'm more concerned about can we.
The extra twenty, twenty or thirty thousand.
Will be okay for three years, five years, ten years.
We're gaining four new students this week, so we'll be at one seventy one, so we're like four new students is, you know. That kind of pays for this, so the the goal is to, and I think, I actually think that this schedule. Is gonna be appealing to more people, um I had Cindy Miller um say, hey, I need to talk to you about all, you know, these people that want to come to Mosher, so. Um, I think that we're on the upright for, like, I'm not, you know, I was really worried about, really, we're gonna talk about E O A grant later, I guess, but. Um, I was really worried about budget there for a while, but I feel like we're pretty solid in what we're doing right now, so I'm not, I don't think that. You know, that's us spending less money on something, so.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I I think it's not necessarily, I mean, just thinking about it, it makes sense, I think it's always nice to have it in paper and that, and that we covered all our avenues. And that it was presented accordingly versus like Marie was saying, it's better to attack things upfront versus, oh, we should have probably done this or like this.
The good news is, like, we're just on the budget, so that would be something we would put in the budget, so.
What's our um max capacity?
Well, well, two twenty according to the contract, but I like, I mean, two twenty is your, is the co- the charter agreement. Thing, I can't imagine more than a hundred eighty kids here, so, I think I'm like, we're with, like, we'd have to dismantle this library.
School classes were twenty eight and those were, those were really big classes. That was way, that was really tough, that, that's when I was teaching.
The largest class size right now.
Twenty three.
Twenty four, oh, oh, yeah.
Actually, that's not true, it's twenty five, the middle school, this school is twenty four, I've been twenty four, so, anyway. And then, um, so what's gonna happen, so. The site, the the smallest class sizes that we have are the K ones, because they're at sixteen. The two, three, um, as of Wednesday will both be at twenty four. The, the, the four, five are going to be at twenty, I think they'll both be at twenty three or twenty four. Cause they're, they're getting a new fifth grader, and then the um, they're, they'll, and actually tomorrow, they'll both be at twenty five, February. We have a new student starting tomorrow, well, returning student.
Let's say, thinking ahead of time, next year, there's a hundred and eighty students, our max, what you, what the school feels comfortable or. What would be the classroom max sizes there?
Uh, hold on, I have those numbers, just a second, um. Okay, so um currently, and I'm looking at the people that apply to attend, like adding those into this, I just moved everybody down, and so. You're looking at, um, so, the. The one that's hard to predict are the K one classrooms, because right now we have seven people that have applied to attend, we're going to be having. Um, a kindergarten kickoff, so we'll have a bit, a little bit better idea, my guess is those are gonna be probably. Another ten or fifteen kids, so their class sizes, I imagine, were, are still going to be in the, what do they have? Like, right now, they're only, they'll probably still be about fifteen or fifteen, they'll be low.
Including kids from the preschool program?
Uh, that's, so the funny thing is, none of those people had applied to attend, and so, so I gave the. Ten to Becca to send out to those people, I'm like, you need to, and I haven't gotten anybody to apply to a den yet, but. Are those kids gonna come? Probably, you know, one of them is our maintenance person, is it gonna come? Probably, I I assume so. You know, and and one of them is a sibling here, so, um, it's just getting people used to the fact that they need to actually apply to attend here. Yeah, um, and then, um, so nineteen, so the two threes right now are at nine nineteen. So that's less, because remember that first grade classroom is less, and then twenty, so for four fives, they'll be at twenty three and twenty, and um. We're gonna have three teachers at the middle school, so they should be, they're all at twenty, so we have the room to grow in all those classes.
I I guess I should be worth what I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to say is, what would be your max comfortable size of whatever classroom?
I would say. Oh.
And in a classroom.
In the K ones, twenty, in the, in the four, five, or the two, threes and the four, but in the two, threes, twenty four, and it's because those classes are small. Um, in the, um, because they're both getting a new student this week and they're like, well, you're really gonna put them, but they'll be fine, I think there's, they'd have an empty slot. In the four or fives, I think they can definitely do twenty four to twenty, like, her classroom is so much bigger than this classroom. Um, that they certainly could do twenty four, I mean, twenty four to me is like the perfect class size, and that's, you know, I just make, it divides easily, you can, you know. Group them easily and all that thing, so twenty four would be.
And middle school, same.
Same, yeah, they're twenty five right now, they're doing five, you know, I think if. You know, that's, that's this place that we need to really start selling as our middle school, you know, if we have some more place based and they're outdoors and. They're really doing well in math and reading and all of that.
I guess my initial question was, then it makes sense if um. If we wanna encourage or um give the opportunity to someone who works here. Or more to have a smaller bus that even the school district feels comfortable of a new driver driving. Like, I I guess I'm just trying to like get some more facts and see where that would like.
Yeah, I I am kind of like the twenty, I'm not sure what that would ser- service, other than it would help us in the mornings, I'm not sure. Um, so if, if the K ones all had twenty, and uh, at the two, threes, each had twenty four. And the four, fives each had twenty four, and the middle school all had twenty four, we could have two hundred and eight kids here. Hell, that's. They're the counselor for that.
For next step, yeah, I'm gonna suggest. That Michelle finalized the hybrid schedule and there might be two versions of it, one is ending early in June, um and one is ending with. The DOWs in June and having more Fridays, and then she gets teacher and and staff feedback on that. Um, and then we also get uh. Parent feedback, and that starts with a Tuesday folder, and then.
I can work on it. For tomorrow, like, wait, I haven't, I haven't gotten home to have dinner yet, but yeah.
Let's not rush it, because we want to do things well.
Yeah.
Right, rather than have.
Well, and that's what, like, this is like, trying to rush it was really.
Yeah, well, you know, we kind of realized increasingly that the four day was, was really challenging to get the hours, and so. Um, then started talking about what Duper schools' hours were and how they have a lot of Fridays off and how they're making that, anyway.
So I have the warning that I can work on this, and I also probably could have called Duper a little bit, just to kinda.
Our next meeting is the eighteenth, right?
Uh, seventeen.
I thought it was Monday, and I was confused about it, so.
But um I do have concerns about um, you know, how our district looks compared to Duper in terms of, cause I was. Just comparing Corbett and Mosher School, and it is quite different in terms of, you know. Um, um, demographic, I'm, um, you know, we have a much higher um ever English. Student population, like twenty five percent here, Corbett's at five percent, our children experiencing power here is at thirty nine percent. Corbett, twenty three, twenty four, is at twenty. So, I think when uh we look at, do, I would love to know.
And I can do it myself, yeah, I can. Duper school, because as a concept, there's a classroom there, I would say it's a really beautiful facility, and to me, like, the student body doesn't seem super different. There's, there's a lot of kids that are bussed in from the DOWs to Duper, that take advantage of Duper as like the in district. And and like to go there, because it's a smaller school with fancy facilities, um, but there's also a really high. Um, both Hispanic and native population there, like, that's where almost all of the native kids go.
Yeah, and I think that there must be something to Duper, because um I uh noticed at the board meeting for North Lasco. Is they normally let thirty kids transfer in and out, and they drop that down to fifteen, so they're trying to. Rain, they might be seeing people going to Duper a little bit more, so.
Well, they have the shifted schedule, I will say, the Duper ends at three twenty and those kids get bussed back to the DOWs, so for parents who really need childcare. Um, which is a major function of school for many families, uh, that ends up being a really nice schedule, um.
And those kids, that Duper's in the Southwest.
Duper's their own school district, I think, right, aren't they?
They're probably Southwest, though.
I don't know much about.
Well, no, cause they're, they have a superintendent for Duper, so I think they're. They have their own school district, I mean, they have their own superintendent.
Yeah.
Because the principal of this grade school is now going to be the superintendent, cause he's retiring, so, yeah. Yeah, so.
The last thing I was gonna add on my list of things to do is just get the um, get better cost totals, confirm the twenty eight passenger bus. What would that cost? Could we finance it? What that, what that look like? If there's other costs and the routes. Exactly, and then also confirm what happens to the route if we stay on a faculty, because there's some ambiguity there.
Yeah.
Um, figure out costs as best as we can.
Difference on school districts. Where are we on the agenda?
I think we can. I think uh we don't have enough information to decide on seven, I think we can table item eight.
Is there an update?
There's, you know, I don't have any more.
I can give you an update, because um, so the really nice thing is Brent is very.
They officially moved along then.
Okay.
So, we'll make a motion, so we're finished item number five for now, with continued discussion based on what Julia's written down there. Um, I make a motion, we table item number six until we have a more clear calendar, I give a second, all those in favor? Any opposed, voice of opposition? Uh, and then I make a motion, we table item number seven, the EMCS school bus discussion, potential action item until we get more information.
Well, we kinda had that discussion.
We had a discussion, but not the action items part of it. Second, uh, so tabling the action item of the M C S school bus. Item number seven. Julia seconded. And we, we can take these back up at our next meeting, although we have more information, whether that's a special meeting or our rated. All those in favor? Any opposed, voice of opposition? Brings this item number eight, which is our D O E grant update.
So every Monday, um, we have our Renew America School Grant Meeting that Brent has put together so nicely, and um, the good news is. Couple of schools actually had had contact with somebody from the D O E, um, the two people that are left in the department. So unfortunately, the person that we were working with is no longer, and she finally did reply that she's no longer working there. Um, and so, but, um, but they have made a new portal, and so Veronica uploaded things, and so what we are hearing is. Um, you have to do everything by the book, meet all of your deadlines, they're telling you to keep, like, and there was one school district that has had some success in this. But she, um, it's really a great group, because they give you tips and tricks and pointers of what you should be doing, and so, anything that has to have a. By America thing, yeah, the Bob, whatever that is, they're like, try to avoid that at at all costs, and so Brent is working on doing two different. Contracts with Piper, one contract would have everything that is in our grant, that he feels will make waves. In that, like, we don't have, like, the HVAC system, that would go to this other grant that we, I mean, this other contract that we have, that will, because. They also said, don't make, um, if it was a, if you said you're gonna do five hundred ninety thousand dollars for the HVAC system, keep it at five hundred ninety, don't mess with that. And so we, yeah, don't donate hostages, and that, um, anything that said the words, the diversity or equity. Move that over to the other, you know, like, try to keep that out of there, and um. I guess what happened is somebody had turned in a grant, they told them to get rid of this language, they got rid of the language, and then they got, they were denied, and then they got it approved. So, um, that's kind of where we're at right now, and so we're just gonna play the game as best we can, the good news, like, I, um. I told Brent, I had a glimmer of hope today, you know, yeah, it was a glimmer of hope that we would get some of our grant, and so, um, Veronica did. We submit thirty thousand to, um, that had the electric on it, but um. The other thing that we, um, she is now in contact, cause Veronica was also on the meeting, and she's also now in contact with people that have had success, and. What do you need to do and what, like, you have to put in whatever the profit was, like, they wanna know that, so she's making sure that she's doing everything by the book. Meeting all the deadlines, they said, do not give up on anything, like, just submit it to the portal, so you can say you've done all that you can, because if you miss something, you'll say, oh. You missed it, too bad for you, so, anyway, so it was, it was more encouraging today, less encouraging for the poor people that, you know. Cause they're like, is your person there? Nope, they're, you know, like, they, they could have, what they did is they figured out who everybody's person was and who had contact with the person. And so there was only two people that actually had contact with the person, and they actually got, and the person had also, the two people had told them. That in the grant where they put stuff in, that they can't, they have to be really careful, that they can put stuff in the notes, and don't forget, like, they're putting like little. Tips in the notes of what they should be doing, so, so they are trying to, they want us to be successful, so that's good.
So can, so will we be able to use those two D O E folks as our contacts now?
Well, you know, I said to Veronica, what if you can reach out to those people, and so she's gonna find out, we're gonna find out a little bit, so.
Give the basket or something.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, they, you know, again, they had set meetings and um, and um, actually had meetings, so that, that was very encouraging, so they saw. They saw people and had meetings. Yeah, cause it wasn't very encouraging last week, they were, like, if they, we were just closed from everything, so, and you couldn't submit anything, now you can. Uh, they, it's, this group is really great, because you'll get an email that says, the portal's open. Yeah, but, but they did change the portal, so, so Veronica got the new portal and was able to upload stuff to that, so, cause she had done it to the old one as well. Yeah, so that's, I mean, so, I mean, I think it's great that you guys have decided to continue and maybe, you know, maybe it won't be as. Expensive as we think.
Yeah, that's, that'd be great.
Maybe, yeah, maybe some of them will get, yeah, get some of the money back for our bus.
I know, it's, I, it's.
I mean, I can't imagine. Well, it, it's actually, it's affecting our filter, like, they had a filter to the factory and they're like, eh, that program's gone.
Yeah. It's affecting a lot, that were the people we were expecting.
Bonneville's got federal, so some of the hatchets are federal, anybody that's got a federal part of it, then those people are gone, but there's some of the hatcheries have federal and state employees.
So, Bonneville just had our Oregon employees working.
I think.
They lost, Bonneville lost employees.
Like, somebody's gotta. Mission critical. Not showing the damn two kids, probably, is not.
Yeah, they said that they were, were excited about this program, they're like, and it's off, but we're finding an alternative for them, so.
Any more discussion for the D O E brand?